Someone says, yep, I'll make that motion, and then you go ahead. In order to close, you state the specific grounds. What statute, you know, lists out those specific ways you can close a meeting. You should be able to point to that and say, based on this exception, this is why we're closing the meeting. If you don't see that, you'll, we'll get questions every once in a while. Well, we're, can we close this meeting because we want to talk about, you know, this member of the public, but we're afraid that they're going to, you know, that discussion, there might be hurt feelings if it's held out in the open. Can we close the meeting for that? Nope, there's no exception in the law that says you could just close the meeting to avoid hurt feelings. You know, that needs to be open. So you need, should be able to point to what that statutory authorization is. Describe the, the subject to be discussed. And then when you're in that closed meeting, that meeting should be, there should be an audio recording of that that the city hangs on to. The only exception to the recording is if you are under the attorney-client privilege, then those don't need to be recorded. But again, and if that's the case, your city attorney should be able to help you out on that. So reasons to close. So these are kind of the ways you can, so if there's an allegation of misconduct typically against an employee and you're going to do, you know, start discussing that issue, you can close for that. There's certain non-public data that's out, that you may be discussing. Again, work with your city attorney to define what that is, you can close for that. Then there are times where it may be closed. Labor negotiations, if you have a union that you're dealing with, those kinds of things. There are procedures in place that allow you to close for those negotiations. Attorney-client privilege, again, and the one thing on that is the attorney-client privilege is, only applies to, you know, pending or threat, actual threat in litigation. So you are really, are, know that there's a high probability that you're going to be a lot, involved in some kind of lawsuit here or there's been, usually it's, you've actually been served, you are in court. You have someone complaining, just saying, if you don't do what I tell you, then I'm going to go ahead and sue the city. That's not going to be enough to close it under attorney-client privilege. You need that actual threat. Employee performance review, we kind of talked about that already. You're reviewing your employee, you can close for that. Purchase or sale of, of property, typically real property. This is, you know, you're trying to figure out the, what you're going to ask, or you're buying a piece of property. Well, let's offer this, but we're willing to go up to this price. Well, if you have to have that out in the open, the person that owns that property can sit there and say, well, they're saying this, but I know they're going to go up to this. It kind of takes away your, your bargaining power, so the law recognizes you can close for that. Then security data, typically this is, you know, if you're dealing with, you know, the alarm system, schematics, you know, those kinds of things that you're using to, again, there's a specific definition and statute for that that you'll want to look at if this ever comes up, but you can hold those in, in a closed session also. So, you know, we talked a little bit, open meeting law applies to the city council. It also applies to other public bodies. So your EDA that applies to that as well. You have a HRA that applies to that, your planning commission. And the big one is this committees, subcommittees, boards, departments, commissions of a public body. So basically, any group that you appoint as a city council to give you recommendations, look into an issue, give you guidance, if you're appointing that group, then yeah, they're probably under the open meeting law. So they should be going through the same process, posting notice, having a schedule of regular meetings, that kind of thing. This is what they're going to work under. So it's not, you know, you have a neighborhood group that's coming and saying, they have an issue. They come up and then you say, well, that's interesting, why don't you find some more information and give it to us? There you're okay, because you're not setting up that, that body or anything, you're just asking for more information. But once you're saying, you know, you see this, we're going to set a committee for the new city hall to start looking at architectural drawings and that kind of thing, and then they bring a recommendation to you guys, they should be acting like they're under the open meeting law. Public PUCs, there is law out there that, it's kind of divided, so if you get into that, you know, it's work with your city attorney. So another, another question. Council member attends a committee meeting and only observes. Other council members serve on the committee, a quorum of the council is present with the additional council member attending. Notice was provided for the committee meeting, but not for the council meeting. Are we, so you got, you know, three of you at the planning commission, serve on the planning commission, let's say, and the rest are, and one comes in and sits and receives, do you think we're in a violation? You are in a violation for the city, the city council, because the city council.
The council, yes, but not the, not the.
Not the planning commission is fine, but the city council members are now a quorum of the, of the city council. So you would need to go ahead and provide notice. If someone else is coming, another council member's coming, post notice that there's going to be a quorum of the council also at that meeting to have those discussions. And like Asia said, it's also, it's not just having the discussions, it's receiving that information. So if you, they're out there and they're taking in this discussion of you guys, that's where it gets to be a little tricky. So, you know, when in doubt, post notice, yeah.
So if we're going to have a personnel and budget committee, we have three council members on that, and a fourth council person wants to listen in to the discussion, we have to post that as a city council meeting as well as a, as a personnel budget committee?
I would post it as a council meeting, yep. Because you, now you have a quorum of the council, not just a quorum of, you know, not just the separate committee you set up. It's the, you know, it's the quorum of that too, so you should post that.
Going back to the scenario. Going back to the scenario with the planning commission.
Uh huh.
So we notice the planning commission meeting. We have an individual that serves on the planning commission that represents city council.
Yep.
And the rest of city council comes specifically to listen what's going on at the planning commission meeting.
Right.
You're saying that's a violation?
The courts have, there are cases out there where the courts have said, yeah, if they're receiving that information as a body, now again, if they're sitting there and they just receive it, you know, you may be having an argument that, yeah, we're okay. But what usually happens is then the rest of you go in the hall and you talk about what you heard and whether that was a good idea, and those for sure are violations. So, you know, when in doubt, I guess, if there's, if you know or you think you, there might be a quorum of the council in the same spot, taking in the same information, you know, better safe than sorry, post those notices. Yeah.
We've been instructed, and we do, stay separate from each other when we go to meetings like that.
Uh huh.
And we've been instructed, and we don't go out or, or together in a group of more than three people as a city council, therefore it wouldn't necessarily be a violation.
Right, I mean, that would be, so what would happen is someone would bring the claim and say, they were all there receiving this information, and now you got to go in and say, well, we weren't having that, there was no exchange of ideas, we, you know, we were just there taking it in, we didn't talk to each other, and you just have that, you know, it is that, that gray area of the law. When, when this receiving versus, you know, having that exchange of ideas, what, when does that constitute a meeting? But, you know, my, I always say, better safe than sorry. It doesn't take much to go ahead and post those notices up on the, you know, on the city bulletin board, and then you know you're good. Then if someone brings that claim, you say, hey, we, we had it posted and you're done, and there's no issue there. Yeah.
Yeah, I was, is there a way that we could, so I'm thinking if we have a personnel and budget committee agenda posted, is there a way to put a footnote on there that says there may be a quorum of city council members? Because sometimes we won't know.
Yeah.
If there are, is that something that, that would be a best practice to add to our, basically all of our agendas? Because we don't have a policy or we don't limit participation from city council members to come do other meetings.
Uh huh.
You know, it's generally, you know, it's generally, you know, they're supposed, they, they can do it if they want to, kind of thing.
Right.
So kind of as a catch-all, is it, are we able to just put that on there and meet that requirement to say, well, there may be quorum of city council at this meeting, basically all of our meetings?
That's exactly how I would do it.
Okay.
Because there's nothing right, you know, if you post the meeting and they say, the city council's going to meet at this time and quorum doesn't show up, there's no penalty for that, and there's nothing you need to do for that. So the more notice you can give to put out there, the better you're going to be. So, yeah, I think that's the way to do it. Now, I have had a city say, they post their regular notice or their regular meeting, for the regular meetings, and then what they do after the meetings, they go down to the bar. And they posted on their meeting notice, hey, after the meeting, the council may be going to the bar and city business may be discussed. I mean, that catch-all I don't think is going to save them. I mean, they're trying to do something just, just in case, but I don't think that's going to be enough. But, you know, but if you're saying, hey, here's the meeting, and by the way, the rest of the council might be here too. Now again, so that's going to limit though, city council's going to be there, so it's not a regular meeting, it's a special meeting. So any ma, any discussions amongst the council has to be then limited to the items on that agenda, what that, that meeting was going to be. You know, so if you, the whole council's at the planning commission, they can only have the discussion on what's going on at the, what was in the notice of the planning commission. And that's where it's going to get a little tricky. So you have your planning commission, they can discuss anything, but the council, you know, what can they get discussed? So that's where it's going to get a little tricky. And it's going to be a case-by-case basis on who brings the claim, how, you know, that kind of thing. So, it's funny, there's, I was at a conference about, with open meeting law, with a bunch of municipal attorneys last week, and the guy presenting presented this district court case that had a open meeting law violation. The judge says, the open meeting law is very simple and can be explained in a matter of minutes. So he thought it was really simple, went onto a 30-page order, and we had a dozen attorneys around the, around the table, you know, literally arguing, you know, discussing situations like this. So it's not clear-cut, so the more, at the end of the day, the more notice you can give, the better you're going to be.
Unfortunately, we had a city council member pass this year, and there was a celebration of life, so obviously everybody paid their respects to our fallen city council member.
Sure.
How would you go about posting something like that? We obviously knew the date, I suppose we could have probably done something, but this was, this was a solemn occasion where obviously city business was discussed.
Right, and we'll get into, we'll get into social gatherings in a little, little bit. Yeah, the open meeting law is not there to say, okay, you are all in the city council now, you can never see each other outside the city council again. Now, there are some city council members that may wish that were the case, and they may argue that way, just so they don't have to deal with the other council members. But, you know, the law recognizes, especially in smaller communities, this is what you, you know, you get together, you have conversations, you know each other from other things, and you have those discussions. It's just watching for when that discussion comes to talking about public business. That's where it gets to be issue. I'm not sure what, hop in when you return, because I'm not sure. So tips to avoid issues with the open meeting, don't meet and discuss businesses quorum unless noticed. We talked about that. Includes poster pre-gatherings. This is the one that can really hang up city councils. The pre-meeting meeting and the post-meeting meeting. We said, your notice says your meeting starts at 6:30, that's when you can start having those discussions. Everyone's up there having the discussions beforehand, oh, what do you think about this item on the agenda, that kind of thing. Your before, when the meeting was supposed to start, you could have an issue there, that's a violation of the open meeting law. Same thing afterwards. You know, meetings adjourn, boom, media, discussion of public business should stop there. That's, I've had, had clients that would go, they would do the motion to adjourn, like as they're locking the door and turning the lights off in the, in the council chambers. So, you know, they're okay there, they can have that discussion, people can still be hearing, but, you know, once you say we adjourn, that's when it needs to stop. Yep, don't discuss official business with third parties, especially complaints, investigations, employee issues or litigation. Just be careful who you're discussing with, pre and post-meeting discussions. So yeah, you know, again, it's, and you know your community too, you know when, you know, what people are looking for. But anytime, if you go from here to go get coffee afterwards, there's going to be a presumption of, hey, I bet they were talking about public business, and now you got to fight that. And this law is there, I mean, you guys were all elected, the people said, hey, we trust you guys, we want you to represent our community. The open meeting law is in there, is put in place to preserve that public trust. And anytime you're, it looks like you're getting around that, that's when the public is, you know, people start to ask questions. And the courts will always look at it and they'll, though, if it's in doubt, they go to more openness versus protecting the city council members. So it's, the facts are out, you're always kind of at a disadvantage there. Serial meetings.
So we have serial meetings, which are meetings of less than a quorum held serially one after another. And generally, this will be a violation of the open meeting law if it's used to get around the open meeting law. So if you're trying to reach an agreement on how to vote in advance of a meeting or polling other city council members individually, this could be considered a serial meeting and will be a violation of the open meeting law. There was also a case in Medina where an employee sued the school district because they had taken a vote on her employment status over the phone and had gone council member, or board member by board member to get a vote. And this was considered a serial meeting and a violation of the open meeting law. So we also have social gatherings, and generally, social gatherings won't be a violation of the open meeting law if there is no quorum or if you don't discuss city business. So as you said, with the city council member passing, if all of the city council members get together and you don't discuss any city business, there won't be any sort of violation. But if you, of course, discuss, like a zoning application at the funeral, then it would be considered an open meeting law violation.
I was like, and it, it can switch real quick. I mean, if you have four of us, you're talking about the local sports team, the weather, you know, hey, how about all that snow we got? Oh my, yeah, that's been, you know, you have your quorum, but no public business. Man, if it keeps, that blizzard comes like it's, they say, that's really going to put a crimp in our snow plowing budget for the year. What are we going to do then? When are we going to get that, where are we going to get that money? Just like that, you've gone from your social gathering, fine, to, oh, now we're talking public business. And it gets hard because this is a lot of what you folks have in common. So conversation starts to dwindle, oh, let's start talking about city business because that can keep the conversation going. Don't do it, because that's when the problems come up.
And we get a lot of questions on this around our annual conference time because a lot of council members want to drive up together. And then we usually say, if you don't discuss any sort of city business or if you avoid sort of talking about anything that has to do with the city, you should be generally fine.
And the other, so, you know, obviously, you're all, who's going to know? And the other per- so, you, you know, obviously, you're up, who's gonna know? That's the question that comes up. Well, we'll, we'll talk about it, who's gonna know? No one's gonna know, we'll be fine. Well, that happens, and then you talk about, how are you gonna vote? You vote, you're on the car, who's gonna find out? Well, then you come to a vote, and then one of the council members had thought about it, and decided to change that council member's vote, votes no. And then the mayor looks at him and says, dang it, Jim, when we were in the car going up to training, you said you were for it, now you're against it. You know, it's things like that, it comes up, so you gotta be careful. Yeah.
So, what if you're not talking about how you're gonna vote, but you're at a conference, a planning-
Conference where you're, uh, trying to find out more about a building project or something. You're telling me the group can't discuss those things?
You know, it gets tricky, 'cause, and we'll get into it in a second, but there is a, the law allows you to go to trainings and receive that information, and talk about, you know, the general, what the information's being provided. But once you start talking about specifically to your city and a specific project that you have going on, now, the open meeting law might be triggered, and you might be in problems. So, you know, there's that general, you know, kind of that general thirty thousand foot, you know, that kind of thing, here's what the law is. You know, we don't hold our trainings to have everyone come, so we can ding them on open meeting laws. You know, we recognize, you're coming to try to do your jobs better, you could have, have those, you know, come to those trainings, get that information. But once you start saying, well, how does this affect my, our city, that's when the issue's gonna come up.
Right.
So, then you gotta watch for whether you're in a quorum or not.
Why would you go to the conference if you weren't, you weren't there to figure out what the conference could do for your city?
Well, you-
First of all, I'm not trying to, it seems like you're going to a conference to, I believe, Minnesota's conference.
Yep.
For front cities or coalition amongst, of, uh, outstate cities. You're going there for a purpose of improving and finding out information of your city.
Mm-hmm.
It seems ludicrous that you wouldn't discuss those things amongst yourself when you're there. I can understand, totally, how everybody's gonna vote, but it doesn't seem logical that you wouldn't talk about, about application of what you're getting at the conference to your own city.
And like I s- how, how I started out, the open meeting law is not here to make your life easier. It makes it more difficult. So, it's, you're having a discussion of, you know, it's a quorum, having a discussion about public business. Those three things happen, the open meeting law applies, and yes, it can be difficult. You know, you want, you got this information, we, let's, you know, how can we use this? How can we make our city better? Let's do this. You can have that discussion with three of you, you can have that discussion with two of you, but you shouldn't be having that discussion with a quorum. Mm-hmm.
So, we have a, another little question, interviews, are they subject to the open meeting law or not? And I'm gonna go with, go ahead.
Well, I have a question, so interviews that might be in the paper or on the radio, is that what we're talking about? Like, where, where everybody could hear?
Job, you know, you're, this council's looking to hire a new, trying to take your job. No. You leave, you go to bigger, better opportunity, they wanna fire a new city administrator, they have people come in, have your, our city attorneys, that happens a lot too. You know, you put out your RFP, um, and then, you know, you interview the city attorneys. Do those have to be open, at all?
So, it really depends, if a quorum is present, then it will be subject to the open meeting law, and it must be noticed and open. But if it's less than a quorum, then there will be no violation, it doesn't have to be open.
But it depend, I mean, it also depends, you know, and then you get into this gray area. Well, are we saying, you three go and interview, and tell us who the best candidate is, and then we'll have, we'll hire that person?
No, the personnel and budget reports back to the city council with, with recommendations of several candidates, and then they would go through those.
And then they, yeah, so I think, yeah, there you're fine, they look through, through a few of a, you know, whittle it down, here are the people we wanna consider, then when those folks come in for interviews, that should be at a-
So, in our case, that, it would be a no, because that's, that's how it would work, and anything under the city administrator would be, would be handled primarily by our city administrator.
Right, right, and that's typically how it is, yep.
Guys, well, make sure to turn the mics on, okay?
So, electronic communications, these get to be tricky as well. So, um, the biggest thing is, don't hit that reply all button. That's when it, you know, 'cause again, quorum, having a discussion, public business. Someone sends out, you know, one-way communication, you're fine. Hey, here's something I wanna consider on the agenda at the next meeting. Sends that out to the whole council, hey, look at this, this article. You're fine there. Someone hits that reply all and says, dang it, council member Jones, that is a stupid idea, this is what we should be doing. Now, we're having that exchange of, of information, and open meeting law can be triggered. Um, so, and we have sample policies you could look at, on how you should be using your emails. You know, it comes up on a lot of different things, you know, you have city, you have chat rooms that you all may be on, bouncing ideas off each other. Also applies to telephone communication. Shouldn't be, um, you know, having a speakerphone conversation, having four of you on the line at one time, or even, I'm gonna call this one, I'm gonna call this member, you know, then we get back into that serial meeting. So, you just gotta be real commer- anytime there's a exchange of ideas, that's when this could be triggered. Um, so, yeah, the one-way email communication doesn't violate, the administrator sends it out. Um, and that's one thing I always recommend, that if you have something that you think should be, go out to the whole council, it'll be put on the agenda, send it to the administrator, administrator can then, you know, put it in the packet, or the clerk, or whoever, and go that way. Use that as a conduit, but it's not, hey, administrator, go see what the, this council member thinks, these other three think, and then report back to me, and then I'll tell, don't use them as a go-between. You know, the basic rule of thumb is, anytime you think, ah, I got the good, the idea to get around the open meeting law, you're going down the wrong path. That's not what you should be doing, and it's likely gonna be held to be, uh, violation. Uh, interactive TV, so the, the law allows you to hold meetings by, um, interactive TV. And we've said, you know, this would include Skype, that kind of thing. But there, you know, very specific ways that, you know, procedures you have to follow in order to go ahead and hold that meeting and be considered, um, present. So, what you have to do, in order to vote at the meeting, you gotta meet all these requirements. Calling on the phone doesn't count, you can't vote over the phone. Now, you could get dinged for a violation if you called in over the phone, but you can't vote, 'cause you're not considered present. So, in order to use the interactive TV, everyone needs to be, on both sides, needs to see and hear everything that's being said and discussed. And that gets to be tricky, and it depends on your specific city, and how much technology you have, and where's that other council member? 'Cause there, wherever that other council member is, their place has to be open to the public too. So, they're at their beach resort down in Florida, and they Skype in, technically, they have to, you know, say, yeah, my room is open for anyone that wants to come in and listen to this meeting. Realistically, is that gonna happen? Probably not, but it, the law requires that that's the way it needs to be. You have to have at least one person here at the regular meeting location, um, and then, yeah, the, everyone needs to be, uh, open and accessible. So, I've seen it done, it, I wouldn't plan on it as a regular way of doing business, 'cause it just gets to be too tricky. If you're gonna rely on that, you know, for big things you got going on, and, well, what if the internet goes out? What if, you know, something doesn't quite happen right? Where are you gonna be? But it does allow, if there's something coming up, so you can see if you can work that out. So, is this me still? Okay. What happens if the city council member from the council next door gets in trouble with this? 'Cause none of, not gonna happen here. So, so, one thing to recognize is, um, in order to get dinged with a violation for the open meeting law, someone has to bring a claim against you as an individual, saying, hey, you violated the open meeting law. And you may, a lot of cities will say, well, no one's gonna do that. You know, they want us to get things done, they want us to discuss things, be efficient, get things done, no one's gonna bring a claim, we're gonna just go ahead and keep doing things the way we're doing, having the discussions in order to help the community. A lot of communities, that goes fine for quite a while, and then what happens? Someone comes in and asks for something, asks for a variance, asks for a license, whatever it might be, and you have to say no to them. You say no, they get mad. Well, I'm gonna sue the city because I don't like the decision they make. Well, you had reasons for making that decision, the courts are gonna kick that out. But I'm still mad, what am I gonna do? I know, I saw them talking at the pre-meeting meeting that day. I'm gonna bring a claim for an open meeting law violation. That's where these come up. It's not because, you know, they have the, typically, it's not because they're altruistic and have the best, um, intentions of the community involved. They just wanna, they're mad, and they wanna get their pound of flesh, and the open meeting law is how they come about that. So, and this is one of those few times when you as city council members have personal liability. It is, you know, this is a claim against you, it's not a claim against the city as a whole, you know, you're not acting on behalf of the city, so it's a claim against you. What it allows is, part of the statute allows, if I'm successful in my claim against the city council member, the court can order up to thirteen thousand dollars of my attorney's fees to be reimbursed. Now, what, so that makes it a lot more appealing. Yes, I gotta hire in a lawyer and bring this claim, but if I know my lawyer's gonna be, get paid by the other side, um, then it's a lot easier to bring that up. Then, for each violation, you individually could be held for three hundred dollar fine, and that's on you personally. You know, so, you know, those, if they've seen a bunch of them, and they bring a claim for, you know, six of them, that could be eighteen hundred dollars coming out of your pocket. City can't pay that, the insurance trust doesn't pay that. I think, does the insurance trust do, would they cover the thirteen thousand? Do you know?
I don't know.
I am pretty sure they do, so that's, you know, you wouldn't be on the hook for that, but that three hundred dollar fine, that's on you. You have three or more separate violations that they bring claims on, they'll go ahead and vacate your office. And this has happened, we've had, uh, I don't think it was a city, but local community, yeah, it was a town, three, three violations, three separate, um, town officers all had three violations, all three of them, judge vacated their office. Judge had to appoint new members then, and now, where it really hurts is now, you know, the public no longer has trust in their elected officials, you know, in the government as a whole, and now the new people in have to start rebuilding that trust, and not, you know, when you lose that trust, now all of a sudden, people are second-guessing everything you do, and that really gets more difficult to get anything done. So, that's why, you know, you just gotta be careful on these.
To be clear, there's got to be some sort of a, uh, proof that somebody, if somebody's accusing you of an open meeting law violation as a way of retaliating, there has to be some sort of proof. It's gotta be substantiated, I guess, in an investigation, correct?
Right, right, I mean, they have to be able to prove, you know, that, yeah, you had the, that conversation, but, you know, some of these, they get them on tape, or that, you know, they'll get the, you know, the texting, we've had one that, you know, they're texting back and forth, and they can get those records. I mean, yes, there has to be proof to be able to prove it up, but even, you know, you go back to just having those conversations, you go from here to the restaurant, can they prove it? Maybe, maybe not, but how does it look? How's that, you know, what does the community think of their council members? If you're doing that, what's the presumption? So, it's just maintaining that, that public trust. But yes, they do have to show that, yes, there was an actual violation. All right, few more questions. Open meeting law requires a public body to provide advance notice of its regular meetings. Yes. Yep, typically, at the beginning of your, the year, you sit, you set your agenda, these are gonna be all our meetings for the year. Keep that on file at the city, you're good there. Uh, open meeting law requires public bodies to follow Roberts' Rules of Order or other parliamentary prac- process when conducting a public meeting.
Fact.
It is not a fact, there's nothing in law that says how you need to do, uh, run your public meeting.
You don't have to have something as a city defined as to how you can conduct your meeting?
Nope, there's nothing required by that. Um-
It's recommended.
We use, we use Rosenberg rules.
Yep.
So-
And, yeah, it's recommended you have something, but what I've, I've found is, you get, you, a lot of times councils, they get so into the minutia of who made the motion, what can be seconded, what, how can we amend this? Every, as long as everybody knows how you're going, and know, you know, on the same page, you're going in the same direction, you should be fine. And you don't get caught up into that minutia of how are we running the meeting? No, point of order over here. I mean, we've had some cities that have had to go some far, so far as hiring parliamentarians, 'cause they've got, but, on the flip side, those kind of cities usually have issues, and there's infighting, uh, amongst them, so, yeah, now we gotta come up with rules, so we can get things done. But generally, just don't let the rules get in the way of getting things done as a city council, 'cause you're ju- you're just wasting your time then. An action of public body can be reversed, because the body did not comply with the open meeting law in conducting the meeting at which it was taken. So, you approve a contract at a meeting that wasn't posted, is the contract still good? It is, actually. So, there's nothing in the law that says, oh, we're gonna undo what you did. But, so, you know, this is, goes back to the proof, sometimes there's, you know, you'll have, I've had, um, clients or seen cases where a municipality, they'll have kept minutes of their, their meeting that's not posted properly, of their illegal meeting. So, you know, the proof there is pretty easy, so, but whatever action you take, it's not gonna un-ring the bell. So, you know, that person that gets mad, they, you mi- and they say, oh, you denied this, my request, but that wasn't a proper meeting. The denial still stands, but there may be open meeting law issues. The open meeting law gives the public the right to speak at a public meeting. Nope. Public meetings, they're your meetings for you to get, to get your business done. And now, if you're, you know, you said earlier, you're gonna have a, the public forum, how you run that, you know, well, if you're gonna allow that, that's great, but you gotta be sure you keep, maintain those rules evenly for everybody. You know, if we're gonna put a three-minute time limit, that three minutes has to be for everyone. Otherwise, you get, well, I like what this guy's saying, so, yeah, let's give him more time, 'cause he's telling us how great the city is, and what a great job we're doing, so we'll give him ten minutes. Next guy comes up, well, he's telling us we're a bunch of bums, cut him off at three minutes. You know, you gotta be, if you're gonna allow it, you gotta go ahead and give them that opportunity. Um, the other thing, there are times when, yes, the public has a right to, to address you. If you have a public hearing that's required by statute, then you gotta give a little more leeway, and just be sure everyone's given that opportunity.
You wanna do that one?
Sure. The open meeting law requires public bodies to prepare meeting agendas and meeting minutes. Actually, it doesn't.
Kind of.
It kind of does, but kind of doesn't. So, it requires you to record and maintain your votes, but not necessarily to, um, prepare meeting agendas and minutes. And you also have to be able to figure out what happened at the meeting, but it doesn't require meeting agendas.
So, basically, just to record and maintain votes is the only reason, but not to prepare agendas.
That's what the, yeah, according to, you know, state statute, now, you know, agendas, again, it's kind of that, does this help keep things moving and help you do your jobs better? Yeah.
I can't possibly imagine how you'd not have an agenda and keep that.
Right, right, it would be a free-for-all, but, again, it's one of those things that, you know, what you'll get is, oh, we had our agenda at a regu-, 'cause, you know, you, here's our regular meeting, we can discuss anything we want. Well, so you get there, you have your agenda, well, you can't discuss anything that's not on the agenda. Nope, you can discuss whatever you wanna discuss at that meeting, you can add things to the agenda, take them off, that kind of thing. That's where it gets, you know, there gets to be confusion on that. And so, your, your minutes, again, are, like Asia said, should be, hey, how do, what happened at the meeting? Can we tell? It's not a dissertation of every word that was said. You'll see those, where they're just writing frantically and getting everything, and then you're going back and forth, was this right, was this right? Those, you know, you don't need to do that, just the general idea of what was discussed, what are the reasons behind the votes you took, and you go from there.
Excuse me?
Yeah.
It was my understanding that you, um, that the purpose for the agenda is to maintain the order in which, uh, the flow is supposed to go, and you're not supposed to be discussing things outside of that agenda?
At a regular meeting, you can discuss anything you want, and, you know, it's up to you guys on how you're get, how you're gonna go ahead and run your meetings, it's up to you to decide how that's gonna roll. It's, what we're saying is, it's not required by statute. Now, if you might have policies in place, how are we gonna run our meetings? How are we, you know, what's it take to get on the agenda? Are we gonna hear things outside the agenda? You know, that's great, and how that flow goes, that's up to you to make that determination. But there's nothing in statute that says, yes, this is the way you have to do it.
If there's a special meeting, then you have to follow what's on the agenda, you can't discuss anything outside of what you've already noticed.
Yeah, if you do your special meeting, that, 'cause you put up that notice of, we're meeting at this time, date, place, and this is what we're gonna talk- meeting at this time, date, place, and this is what we're gonna talk about. Now, you're limited to discussing what's on, what you put on that post, but your regular meetings, you can discuss anything and everything under the sun, and you can keep talking until two, three in the morning, if you want.
So, at the League, the research attorneys, we're always here to answer your questions. We're open from nine to five, Monday through Friday. You can call us, you can email. If you have any sort of questions, including open meeting law questions, we're here to answer them.
Well, we're a rather scholarly bunch, as you can tell.
[laughing]
We certainly had our eyes open, I think, on a couple of these different things.
Yeah, and it's one of those things, there's a lot of misconceptions out there, and well, as, you know, as long as we don't make a decision, we're fine. And, you know, it's, that's not the purpose of it. And, unfortunately, yeah, a lot of councils, they'll go that way a long time and be fine, and they just keep, keep rolling along, and then you say no, or someone gets mad, and then you get into trouble. So, it's better than, to know, you know, do violations happen? Never. No. I mean, yes, they happen, and, but, we just wanna be sure, as elected officials, you know the risks you're taking when you go ahead and have those conversations.
This is the fifth one of these that I've been to in, in the last two years, or less than two years. I was telling council member, as, as we sat down for this, every time I have one of these that I go to, there's something else in there that wasn't discussed or wasn't in any of the others.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. I would like them all to have everything, 'cause it's confusing.
Yeah, it can be, and it's not, it's not clear cut. I mean, the, a lot of these aren't litigated, and how's the judge gonna decide it? I mean, that's why I said this conference I was at last week. I mean, we had, you know, twenty, you know, municipal attorneys, this is all they do, and, you know, some of the brightest minds in the field, and these are kind of the same questions we're discussing with each other as attorneys. So, it's not clear cut, but, so it's, you know, it's better to be cautious, you know, tell, try not to have those conversations. You know, someone comes up and says, well, I talked to this councilperson, this councilperson, this councilperson, say, about this issue, that, you know, I, I can't hear any more, we'll bring it up at the meeting, you know, post where you, as much as you can, and just take the steps to, to avoid it as best you can.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
All right, you bet. Hopefully, we didn't scare you too much.
Appreciate your time. Okay. Now, gonna move on to our consent agenda, and our consent agenda tonight consists of our city council minutes, September tenth, 2018, which was revised, our approval of dispersment through September twenty-fourth, 2018, and our infants remembered in silence, or known as Iris proclamation, which was also revised. Can I get a motion to go ahead and accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. We now move on to public comment. Public comment, if you wish to participate in public comment, you must sign up prior to the commencement of the meeting. Negative remarks about city staff or employees is not allowed. You'll have a time limit of five minutes to comment. The total public comment per period shall be thirty minutes for non-agenda items and thirty minutes per agenda item. Disruptive or disorderly behavior will not be tolerated. We've got Ron Merrill, Lillian
Um.
Thomas, and Sarah Malkow, and I do not have a topic for you, Mr. Olson. What's your topic?
To be decided.
That's not, we can't do that. We have to have a topic.
When did that go into place?
That's the way it's supposed to be.
That wasn't that place the last time.
Well, do you have a topic, or do you not?
I do not.
Okay. Ron Merrill, please.
Good evening, Mayor, fellow councilmen. Uh, my name is Ron Merrill, and the purpose of, uh, me being here is to follow up on a question I asked in a previous meeting, and then I have a follow-up question on that regarding, I was, um, I asked a question on August twenty-seventh, regarding the PUD concept plan for the INH properties at Distel and Ridge Road. And, um, my question was, where does the city council stand on the, um, August ninth, Planning Commission's recommendations? And you answered my question with, you couldn't really address that, something to the fact that we were still within the sixty-day window, and that there was, um, uh, imminent discussion with the Planning Commission coming up, and perhaps, responding to the, the question with an answer would result from that. Then later on, the gentleman to your left, sir, you, you responded with, um, about an hour later, that the, um, the contractor withdrew his, his bid for that, and I got the impression that, um, that the meeting, or that the item was settled, that, um, approving the application was no longer required since it was withdrawn. Is, is that correct? I saw in the, um, in the minutes for the August twenty-seven, you have my name and you stated the question, but none of the responses are associated with that question, nor in the follow-on minutes, and I just asked that, are there an amendment to the minutes, or some, something noting, uh, the responses to the question. But that led me also to believe I needed to look at the Planning Committee minutes from August ninth. I saw in agenda items where Nate Spark, the city planner, was addressing the Planning Commission with, um, an information packet, um, that needed to be discussed and decisions made on August ninth, and in it, something, um, question, I had a concern because in it, it, it stated that, um, the staff is recommending approval of the application. Now, this is before the meeting started, and it, in the minutes, it clearly states the reasons for, uh, the recommendations that the Planning Committee made to not rezone and to not approve, uh, the application based on its lack of merits. I, I get that. But also in the minutes, it said that the zoning code update couldn't be discussed on the ninth due to lack of time, and that it would be pushed to the thirteenth. And looking at, uh, September thirteenth minutes, it, there wasn't a whole lot of discussion or anything of substantive nature addressing the zoning code update. So maybe perhaps I don't understand what that is, but a concern question kinda enveloped from all that. And that question is, is there any intent or discussion other than from the city staff to rezone the single-family home, the R2, to a multi-level living R4 in that area that I just mentioned?
Do you have anything else?
No, I think that should do it.
Okay.
So that was a question.
You know that, uh, pro, the project has been pulled?
Yeah.
That was taken care of already, so, you know, everything that you've just talked about, this is al, this decision is already announced already, that we are not rezoning from R2 to R4 over there.
Okay, but that's not in the council's minutes.
It's not in the council's minutes.
Correct.
Okay.
It's in, well, I don't see that it's in any minutes. You're in the Planning Committee's committee?
I can't speak for the Planning and Zoning Commission, I can only speak for the city council.
Okay.
And we, we were never given anything official by the Planning and Zoning Commission because they've recommended a denial.
Okay. Well, then, my question, my last que, my question is, is there any intent or discussion to, in the future, to rezone that area from an R2 to an R4?
Again, that would have to be something that would be discussed at the Planning and Zoning Commission. We, they're, they're the body that goes ahead and investigates these types of things, and then they go ahead and give a recommendation to city council. That's when city council gets involved, once we have a recommendation, one way or the other.
Mr. Mayor, if you may.
Mm-hmm.
As I've already discussed before, any person, under any circumstance, can put together any plan that they want and submit it to, um, planning and zoning. Whether they want to have the thing rezoned or not, or change, uh, uh, any of the parameters around it, is entirely up to them. We have no say over that until it winds up going into planning and zoning. So, to, for any of us to sit here and say that there are no plans for that to happen, it depends on who's gonna come to the table and say that this is what they want, and then it's gonna go to planning and zoning and have to go through the same process.
Okay, my, my concern was that the city staff recommended that the, the approval of this application.
City staff recommends approval on lots of things, but that's why we have a city council to go ahead and decide amongst us whether or not it's for the best of the city.
So the zoning code update doesn't deal with these issues, or is that all, I know some contracting firm you hired to, to establish your zones for your, uh, twenty forty comprehensive city plan?
The zoning code update was done by Nate Sparks, and that was, again, something that was done as a request of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Okay, so, in it, does it say that the zone would be changed from an R2 to an R4?
Not that I know of.
All right, thank you.
Could, can I just?
Sure.
Trip in your, um, in the, in the comprehensive plan that was completed in two thousand sixteen, one of the recommendations there is for the city to update its zoning codes that haven't been updated for many years. So, and I think, I think, I think the Planning Commission eventually is gonna be responding and looking at a lot of different codes to see if they need updating. Whether or not they get to the R2, R4 one again as part of that process, um, I, I, that might be another way, uh, that got revisited, I don't know, but that's a Planning Commission thing. But the comprehensive plan specifically recommends that the city make sure that its zoning code gets re-looked at and updated.
Okay.
For the entire city, not just this development you're talking about.
Okay, uh, thank you for your answer, and I assume, since you took down a note, that the response to my question wasn't in the, the minutes that it, it would be?
I did not see anything in last, last meeting's minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
And this is about, uh, something to do with city mowing on Foxborough?
Yes, sir. Um,
Welcome.
You guys are gonna have an easy time with this one. This is something that's not even on your books yet. Jasper, I'm sorry that I have to come up here, because I know you guys really try to save our tax dollars the best you know how. Um, we have a property that's the city's in between Barone and, Barony and Foxborough Lane and the one hundred block, lot number twenty-one ninety-nine nine point one zero four zero, that they were thinking about planting long grasses and wildflowers to cut mowing costs for the city. And when it all sounds very wonderful, except if you live in that neighborhood, it that butts right up to everybody's properties, lots are small in that neighborhood, and vermin, rats, mice, mosquitoes love long grass, and, and it, to me, it is a big negative for our, if we wanna keep our property costs up, or our property values up in that neighborhood, we don't need vermin moving in, and we, we have a neighborhood where everyone tries to keep their lots sprayed and weed killer on them. I mean, we, they spray for mosquitoes in our neighborhood, a lot of people do. And, so I'm asking the city to rethink, or, or just to not even think about doing that in our neighborhood, because everybody on our block that has butted up to it, except I should have signed twice, because I have two properties there, um, has signed this, except for the vacant house in Huntington, who isn't here this evening. I finally caught him the other night. So, I don't know if you want these, I made a copy for each of the rest of the councilmen, but...
Please.
Okay. I didn't make you one, I'm sorry.
And as you do know, that's fine, and as you know, Lillian, we don't take, we don't take any action on anything that, uh, we're talking about tonight, we're simply gonna go ahead and look at it.
The last page is really important, and it should probably be in the front, because we really do appreciate you guys. We just don't know what to do with ourselves if something, you know, should happen. We, this is the only way we know how to, I, sorry, I can't share. So, you know, there are neighborhoods that probably would do this. I talked to people, and they say, oh, this, this sounds good. Well, in their neighborhood, it's good. But we're old people. We, we don't, we don't like bugs, we don't, we don't care for coyotes, we don't care for deer, really, in our, if I did, I would live in the country. So I thank you for taking care of our town. Please keep taking care of our little neighborhood, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lillian, and we'll certainly take everything under, under advisement and get together with our city staff.
Thanks, guys.
Sarah Malkow.
Good evening, Mayor, city council members, city administrator. Um, I couldn't help but notice the address that was given to you, this body, by a member of the public at the last meeting during the same public comment period. And I am here to say to you that, um, my husband and I were visited by, um, the city administrator and one member of the Planning Commission while this public, uh, the PUD application was under consideration by the city to hear our concerns, and we visited a member of the Planning Commission at that person's home. At no time did any Planning Commission member go door to, go to, come to my door soliciting my opinion, or telling me that some sort of other use was going to take place other than what was present in the application. In addition to that, I have not been able to find anybody to say that that happened, or have heard of that happening. That's what I wanted to say.
Mr. Olson, you wanna come on up?
I've been denied the opportunity, so I'm not...
I'm giving you the opportunity, if you'd like it.
I'm not going to come up.
Okay. Go ahead and accept a motion to go ahead and close the public, uh, comment portion of our meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's carried. First item on the dock tonight is the nuisance hearing, but that has been pulled, so we do not have to worry about any abatement order or anything of that nature, so now we'll move on to seven, Bravo, which is the NLC service line warranty program.
Mayor Heck, members of the city council, we have a presentation on this. Um, items have been included in the packet, and I'll have a PowerPoint that will be described.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, I just wanna thank you all for having me here this evening. Uh, my name's Ashley Shaworski, and I represent the National League of Cities Service Line Program. Um, our service line program is the only one that is endorsed by the National League of Cities, as well as we are members of the League of Minnesota Cities Business Leadership Council as well. The company, though, that I actually work for is called Utility Service Partners, and we administer this program. And we're a Better Business Bureau business with an A-plus rating, as well as we did win the Torch Award for Marketplace Ethics from the Better Business Bureau. So that is something that we're, um, very proud of and are always striving to maintain that high level of ethical standards while conducting business. But what our program really is designed to do is to help address the public policy issue of our aging infrastructure. We know that cities like yours, all across the United States, really are doing their part to either upgrade or maintain their public infrastructure, but the homeowners' portion of these lines were kind of being forgotten about. So that's actually why the National League of Cities went out and did research. They wanted to make a program like ours readily and easily available to cities and towns all across the United States. So they went out, did the research on your behalf, and we were the company that they did choose to provide this program. So what we would do is we would partner with the city in order to make our completely optional program available to your residents, and we provide homeowners with protection on their external water lines or well lines, sewer or septic lines, as well as their in-home plumbing. plumbing. And we provide these services with a complete turnkey approach for the city, where we handle all the aspects of the program: the marketing, the billing, the claims management, and customer service. And there is absolutely no cost to the city if you choose to participate in our program, and the city would receive an incremental revenue stream for their participation as well. What I always find to be the biggest benefit of our program is that it simply helps to raise awareness. Pretty much every city that I speak with, I hear the same type of thing, that if a resident has some sort of issue with one of their external lines, most of the time, their first call is to someone here at the city. And then you not only use the city's time, but dollars, sending someone out only to determine that the issue is on that residence's portion of the line. And then someone's left being that unfortunate bearer of bad news, letting a resident know that these lines are not covered by the city or their homeowner's insurance. So that's really why I think of our program as a free public awareness campaign, because we would send a letter out to all of the residents, letting them know that the city has partnered with us to make this program available, available to them, but most importantly, educates them of what their service line responsibility is. So that way, even if they choose not to enroll, at least in the future, they are well aware of this, and the city really tried to take a proactive approach at helping to educate them of this. Also, a huge benefit of our program is the peace of mind, because now the residents know if they want to, for just a few dollars a month, they are able to transfer the risk of these lines onto us, a company that's not only partnered with the National League of Cities, but also the League of Minnesota Cities. And then that way, if they have an issue, they just make one call to us, 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and we would dispatch a local licensed plumber or contractor to do the repair. So that is a large benefit of our program, that we only use your local area contractors for all of our work. And we do that for a lot of reasons, but mainly, we want to keep as much money here within your local economy as possible. But also, your local plumbers will be familiar with your city's local codes, and will make sure to do the work up to our standards, but also yours, which includes to get all of the proper permits for the repairs. And what happens is if we did partner with your city, we would develop a contractor network that would specifically service your claims. I mean, you all here could be as much or as little involved in that process as you would like. Where some of our partners provide us a list of contractors that they are familiar with, or maybe already working with, or that are well-known within your city, and some want to stay out of it as much as possible. Really, either option works for us, but with all of our contractors, we go through a detailed vetting process, where we make sure that they are local, that they are licensed, that they have the proper amount of insurance, that they don't have any type of open complaints with the Better Business Bureau. But we also conduct background checks and drug screenings, because we always want to make sure that it's someone that a resident feels completely comfortable with coming to their home, but also inside of their home. And then as for our coverage, we do offer three completely separate involuntary programs. We offer an external water line coverage, which would cover any well lines, external sewer line coverage, which would cover any septic lines, as well as our in-home plumbing. Our two external products are pretty much set up identically, so whether it's the external water line or external sewer line coverage, we begin to cover those lines wherever they become the residence's responsibility, all the way to where they enter their home. So that way, if a resident is having an issue, whether it's a broken, a cracked, a leaking pipe, a tree root issue, a clog that needs cleared out, really anything that is impeding the flow of those lines, as well as we do cover the thawing of frozen external water lines, not that I want to think about that yet, but they just make one call to us, we send out one of those local plumbers, and what they receive for their coverage is up to $8,500 towards each and every repair incident. So that is something that greatly separates us from other companies out there, is that ours is always on a per-incident basis. So we never have an annual or a lifetime limit, as well as we never limit the number of incidents or claims that a resident can have in a calendar year. So again, they always receive up to that $8,500 towards each and every repair incident, and we would never have any type of service fee or deductible, because we do not want, you know, a $50 or $100 service fee to deter anyone from actually giving us a call and getting their issues taken care of. And then as for our third product, it is the in-home plumbing, and this was really developed by request of our current municipal partners, as it kind of was that missing piece of the puzzle. And this covers any of the water, sewer, or drain lines that are actually in the home after the point of entry, that either may be broken or leaking. It also would include any lines that may be embedded under a slab or basement floor, and coverage for the repair of clogged toilets. And this one is very similar, where there's never a service fee or deductible, no annual or lifetime limit, never a limit on number of claims that someone can have in a calendar year. And for the in-home plumbing, it is always up to $3,000 towards each and every repair incident. And we really do come to find that when someone chooses to enroll in any of our programs, they typically are a little bit more proactive about getting their issues taken care of, because you know, no one ever knows who to call when they have that issue, as well as they have no idea what it's going to cost. So now a resident knows that the cost of determining what their issue is and getting it taken care of is not coming out of their own pocket. And then I know the big thing everyone always wants to know is how we market our program, so we only market by direct mail, so you don't have to worry about us calling door-to-door, anything like that. We typically have three mail campaigns per calendar year, which are normally in the spring, the fall, and the winter. And the reason why we offer multiple campaigns is because we offer multiple products. But one thing is, we would never send anything out to a resident unless we did have your review and approval prior. So what we do is we, before each and every one of those mail campaigns, we send you a digital copy of that marketing letter for your review and approval. We always want you to have input on what goes out to the residents. We know you know the homeowners here better than we ever could, as well as we want you to know exactly what they are receiving. So then once we get the approval, we give you an exact mail date, you know, right when those letters would be arriving at a homeowner's door. And if for some reason we do not receive the approval, we would never mail to the residents for that campaign. So the city always has complete control on if and when a letter does go out. And just to give you a quick idea of what that letter looks like, the beginning really is that educational piece, where it lets a residence know that these service lines are their responsibility, but then it is an introductory letter where the city would be introducing this program to its homeowners. But it clearly states that we are a separate company providing this, as well as it is always optional for a resident. It does go out with the city's either logo or letterhead, that way your homeowners know that this is the program that the city's participating in. But the bottom of it has all of our information: our logo, our phone number to call with questions or to enroll. Same thing with our website, they can go there for lots of good information, or enroll right on our website, or they can return the bottom of the form directly to us. So really, the city's involvement in the program is just in that introductory piece, but once someone chooses to enroll, all of the correspondence is directly between us and them. We know that you all here have more than enough going on, so we handle all the aspects. We do the marketing, the billing, the claims, and the customer service. And then, just to give you an idea, we do have over 550 municipal partners all across the United States, and we do have 23 city partners here in Minnesota. And I know I've just rambled on to you all for the last 10 minutes or so, so I'm sure you also may have some questions for me as well.
Ashley, what a presentation. I wasn't even aware there was such a program until I read this packet.
Thank you.
Got educated quite a bit. On the exhibit A, you talk about the different products: external water service line warranty for $5.75 a month, external sewer septic line warranty for $7.75 a month, and the interior plumbing and drainage warranty for $9.99 a month. So just to make sure I understand this now, if a person wanted to have all this coverage, they would be paying these numbers to you on a monthly basis?
Correct.
And the city would have no involvement, other than just to make sure that they work along with you to get the initial letters sent out, and this would be strictly up to each of the homeowners as to whether or not they'd want to participate with NLC?
Correct. We enter into an agreement with the city. It's a marketing agreement, it lays out the pricing there, the scope of coverage, lets you know we never mail without your review and approval. Most importantly, the agreement's put into place to indemnify and hold the city harmless. But moving forward, the involvement is, we send you that letter before each campaign for your review and approval.
Okay, my next question would be, 817 cities in Minnesota, 23 are represented with your company now. How long have you been doing this in Minnesota, and why only 23 of the 817?
So I guess there's a two-part. Typically, we were only focused for, I guess, we've probably been in Minnesota since 2011, if I'm thinking back properly, but we were mainly focused on just the Twin City area, and we have spread out to more rural areas as we've grown as a company. Also, we typically don't work with cities that have under 1,000 households, which makes up a large portion of the cities in Minnesota. Not that we won't, we just don't actively reach out to them. If someone reaches out to us, but you know, we definitely, you know, work with them, or people that I meet at your conference every year, you know, sometimes there's a smaller one, but our target is above 1,000 households. So that kind of eliminates a large, a large portion, as well as some of the areas also in Minnesota, there's a couple cities that have their own city-run programs, so.
Well, I'm sure I got some city council members that have some questions. Councilmember Fabiles.
You're saying that you work with companies that are with the Better Business Bureau? And it's one thing when you are operating in the Twin Cities like I used to, you'll have more contractors and subcontractors that are accredited with the Better Business Bureau. The further out you get in rural areas, the less and less that you're going to wind up having that are with the Better Business Bureau. So if that's part of your criteria, then it's possible that you're going to be hiring contractors that are outside of this area, if that's part of your criteria.
They do not have to be accredited, but if they are, we make sure that they don't have a negative accreditation. So we go through, you know, mainly, the biggest is the background checks and drug screenings, but for, you know, for their, I guess, experience. The Better Business Bureau is great, obviously, we know not everyone has that accreditation, but we're looking more for negatives, you know, as opposed to having that accreditation.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Please.
It strikes me that all you're asking us to do is let you use the city name, putting our logo on things, when you could do this without us, and we wouldn't have to vote on anything. Is that true?
So yes, we could market without the city's approval, that is something we do not do. Our program is only available through a city partnership. We would never be able to offer the coverage that we do to your residents for that pricing without the city's partnership. So because of that, it does allow us to offer that more generous coverage for the lower premium, and the business model doesn't really make sense without the city's partnership, because then you have to raise the price, and then people don't sign up because it's too expensive. So it kind of is, you know, it does help us out, but then in turn, offers a better product to the residents.
Can you expand it? Why is that? Why is, why does it make it, why having the city involved make it any less expensive?
Because we get a higher participation rate. So, you know, that's, we get a higher participation rate, we can, we know that we're going to have residents sign up in this area, we can develop a contractor network, make sure that we have the contractors to service those claims, so it is a whole model that helps that pricing.
So we're part of your marketing program?
So it's a marketing agreement we enter into with the city.
And what do we, what does the city get from it?
The city receives a revenue for participating. So the city receives 50 cents per month per paid warranty contract. So essentially, if the homeowner did choose to enroll in all three products, the water, sewer, and the in-home plumbing, then the city could receive up to $1.50 per month per household, and that is paid to you in the form of a revenue every January. A lot of our partners do different things with this, obviously, anyone could do anything that they want, some just put it into the general fund. But also, a lot of our resident, or a lot of our partners use it to help a resident that may be having trouble paying one of their utility bills from month to month, or may, a resident that may have a leak and a large water loss. I know cities try their best to help in those situations, so it can kind of go to offset that aspect. And I know one that uses it to help pay for their fall festival. So it's really however you, as the city sees fit. And if you did not want to receive that, we just decrease the cost of the program by 50 cents per month for the resident.
Is there a certain amount of customers you're looking to sign up within a specific city?
We do not have any type of minimum participation. So if one resident were to enroll, we would service that one resident. Our average is in about the first year, we get about a 10% to 12% response rate, and then where we hit that maximum, where, you know, you're getting a few new sign-ons, but some dropping off is right around that three-year timeframe, and it's about 20% to 25% of residents choose to enroll in a program. Sometimes it's a little bit more popular in the colder climates here, so.
Mr. Mayor, if I may ask another question?
Councilmember Crogly.
In item number two, grant of license, I think I can read, and I think I understand this, and it makes no sense. The first sentence says you are asking for a non-exclusive license, the last sentence says you're asking for an exclusive license.
So I agree with that part. We can, it is a non-exclusive agreement where you can give that license to anyone, but not to a direct competitor. So that's what, for the program. If that is an issue, we can change that and make it just solely non-exclusive agreement. We've had cities that ask that. That agreement's nothing set in stone there. But our standard is, we don't, if you extend it to a direct competitor, that makes it very confusing for a resident. If you had two people mailing in, a lot of homeowners might think, oh, this is something different, I should sign up for this, too, and then they might sign up for both. So that's why our goal is to not confuse residents, so.
One final thing, it strikes me that everything here could be purchased through individual insurance. I can get this through my insurer, I know.
From your homeowners?
Yes.
I was going to say, I have not, I know, I live in Pennsylvania, but when I bought my house, I was not able to purchase this. It's typically excluded from a home warranty as well. The home warranty will cover the pipes inside of the home sometimes, but it will not cover the laterals in the front yard. Typically, though, if you were able to find it by your homeowner's insurance, I haven't been able to find it, but your homeowner's typically has a $500 or $1,000 deductible. When you file a claim, your rates increase, where we never have that deductible, and our rate is the same for everyone that lives within the city. So if you had it and filed 10 claims, your price is not going to go up because you filed those claims. And that's also why we make our program optional. So if someone finds something that they like better, our program is just an option for them.
At the risk of being redundant, could you please walk us through the process? So I sign up, and I have a water line that breaks in my yard this winter. Tell me what NLC does, walk me through the steps.
Sure.
Tell me what I'm going to be paying.
So you would make one phone call to us, you will either get someone in my office, which is right outside of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, or we also have another office that takes calls in Chattanooga, Tennessee, you would get someone there, they would, you know, talk to you, figure out what's going on, then we would have, dispatch one of our contractors that are in the network. And then that contractor is expected to call your homeowner within one hour and be at their home within 24 hours to do the repair. Then once the repair is completed, that contractor bills us directly for the service. So it's nothing that a homeowner, you know, has to pay for and wait for a reimbursement, all of that is done directly between us and that contractor.
Okay, question. Councilmember Fabiles asked about the potential for contractors and subcontractors, especially away from the Twin Cities like we are. So once we become a participating town with NLC, I assume that first thing that happens then as you go on out and find qualified contractors that are put into your queue to respond to any problems that any of our citizens may have?
That is correct. So once we partner, once we enter into an agreement with a city, we have something that's called an onboarding phone call, that's where we go over if you want to provide any lists of contractors' names to us, and we begin customizing our marketing letter specifically for your review and approval. From that call, we typically like to mail within about eight to 10 weeks, so that gives us that time to start reaching out to the contractors and getting them in our network. So we definitely want to have, we typically like to at least have two, first city this size, at least two contractors in our network for that first mailing.
Okay, just going back to my original question about what the process consists of, so the water main is now fixed, $8,000 has been spent by you to the contractor, and I continue to pay the $7.95 a month, correct?
Or you could cancel.
Or I could cancel.
Yes, it's always month-to-month for a homeowner.
Month-to-month.
So a homeowner is able to cancel at any time.
Does everybody kind of understand everything that Ashley's telling us now? Okay, is there anybody that has any other questions? Councilmember Fabiles.
What does it cover? Because you're getting into contracting, digging up people's lawns, and so on, so is that bringing it back to original condition?
It would be restoration and reseeding at any sidewalk and street repair that's needed.
And it doesn't matter how many claims they have, you're not going to drop them?
No.
Let's be clear, the answer to that is yes, not no. He said, are you not going to drop them? You said no.
No, we will not drop them.
Okay, let's be clear.
Yeah.
Okay. Anybody else? Councilmember Johnson, you look like you have a question.
Well, I'm trying to leverage the city getting behind something. Well, I'm trying to leverage the city getting behind something like this and Newell's point that a lot of insurance may already cover this, and how a, how a consumer, um, realizes that and does his due diligence, his or her due diligence to figure out if this is helpful or redundant. And if this puts any local contractors in a bind or gives them extra work to do, just to be a part of the program and stuff.
So, um, on our letter, we typically have something on there that says, you know, check with your insurance provider to make sure you don't already have coverage. If there's any type of additional wording that you would like us to make it clearer, you know, we wanna make sure that it's a letter that you're happy with. And the second part about the contractors, typically contractors generally are happy with us, um, because they know they're getting a steady stream of work without advertising. But most importantly, they're guaranteed payment within a timely fashion. Because sometimes, you know, they go out to someone's house, it's a couple thousand dollars, that resident doesn't have that, so it takes them a while, you know, to pay that contractor. So they know with us they're getting paid within thirty days.
You mentioned something about the HOA warranty people as well. We do have some new construction within La Sure. So would this be something that would piggyback along with their HOA warranty, or how would that work?
So it would be, they're two, would be two completely separate, so depending who they want to file a claim with. I know, um, I had a home warranty that had a, it didn't cover my external lines, because I had a gas leak, but, um, uh, my home warranty had a hundred dollar deductible too. So if it was me and it was something that I would, you know, go with the, without the deductible, so.
Our city administrator, Mr. Krugel.
I got one question.
Sure.
Let's say we have a reconstruction project in the city, and through that process, uh, a water line is lead or a sanitary sewer line is made out of a material that's not approved by the city. Would this be something that would be covered underneath this program, or would this be something that's not?
So we do not go out and just replace a line because it is not up to code. So if it is lead or orangeberg or something like that, we don't go out just because, because of that. But if we're out there doing a repair, obviously, we could do all of our repairs up to the city's code. So it's not gonna be up to code to patch a lead line. So we will do that repair up to your city's code and replace that lead line.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody? Councilmember Favelas.
Going back to the mayor's scenario. So you have a problem, you come out, and now I'm gonna veer off. What happens when the contractor doesn't do what they're supposed to do? Because we all know that happens.
So all of our work, um, is guaranteed for one year. So if a contractor came out and didn't do it up to proper standards, um, you know, it is guaranteed for one calendar year. So if you happen to cancel after you had that repair, you know, it's still guaranteed for that calendar year. We have a great contractor team in-house that works closely with those contractors. Um, you know, sometimes they'll give them film and different things if they camera the line. And they are made up of plumbers and engineers that kind of are way smarter than I'll ever be, but, um, they really know, um, and watch those claims very closely, as well as we have, um, they're called ROMs, but they work directly with the contractors in a region. So they're their main point of contact, and they really work closely with all of the jobs.
So in a twenty-four, they're supposed to be there within a twenty-four hour period. You've never had a situation where a contractor doesn't show up in that twenty-four hour period?
So obviously, it's not, we, it happens. That's typically where we may pull, if for some reason the contractor in the network isn't, um, doesn't reach out to them right away. We have, um, systems of checks and balances in our dispatch system where it alerts our call center, that resident has not received a call, that resident, that contractor has not been dispatched out there, or sometimes people call us back. But it's all, um, we try to keep it as automated as possible. And then that's sometimes where we may, um, have to pull a contractor, if, you know, the ones in this area aren't being responsive from, you know, a neighboring region, because our main goal is to provide service to the residents. But, you know, our goal is to the twenty-four hours. Obviously, sometimes there are situations that occur, um, but, but that's our, our service level.
Thank you. Mayor?
Councilmember Sullivan.
What's your wait period from the time I sign up to the time that you're allowed to place a claim?
Sure, we have a thirty-day wait. So on your thirty-first day, you can file a claim.
Okay. Is that to prevent people from knowing they have an issue and?
Correct.
Any other questions from any of the members of the city council? Thank you very much, Ashley, for the presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you all for having me, and all of my, uh, my phone numbers in that folder there for you on the PowerPoint. So if any of you think of additional questions, just give me a call or send me an email, and I'd be happy to help. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll move on to light item seven.
Okay. I was just gonna say, um, so before you is, is a marketing agreement. And i- if there's more information that's needed, um, you know, I can take that direction now. If city council feels comfortable, uh, in, engaging with this, with NLC, um, with this marketing agreement, we can execute this agreement tonight. So I'll leave it up to city council as far as the direction we wanna go. Uh, if there's additional information, I'm sure Ashley can get that information to us. If there's modifications to the agreement, uh, that you feel, uh, we should include in there, we can also do that or make those requests. But, um, I'd like direction as far as how we'd like to proceed.
Right, and I, I, I only jumped the gun there because quite frankly, I wasn't sure if anybody had the opportunity to thoroughly review this. I'm sure you all did, but want to maybe give you an opportunity that if you had it, if you wanted to have some time to kinda look it through and perhaps bring it back for our next city council meeting, but if we're ready to go ahead and discuss tonight, let's, let's do it. Anybody have some thoughts?
I have this thought. I'm not saying how I'll vote one way or the other, but I will not vote for this if we have a contrary thing in paragraph two about non-exclusive, exclusive. In fact, I would absolutely prefer it be non-exclusive. Let the competitors come in, let there be an open market. I realize we're, if we did this, we'd be putting our name and our logo on things, but I would not do it, I would not approve it, I don't think, if the last sentence of paragraph numbered two, grant of license, were there. I'd just strike it. That's my thought right now.
My particular reason why I didn't wanna move forward on this is I wanted to personally check with my insurance company to see what was covered, what isn't covered. Because I know that I personally had a situation once upon a time, building a new house, where I had a drain tile failure, and I could not get, uh, coverage either by my insurance company or by homeowner warranty. So it's something that just makes a person say, you know, maybe it's time to kinda review our insurance policies to see what we have. Councilmember Favelas.
I would, uh, feel more comfortable with talking with the references from the other cities and see how the program is going in their city. And Jasper, if, if it's possible for staff to check into some, and then come back, what?
I have reached out to, uh, the Edina city manager and the St. Louis Park city manager, and they are happy with the program.
Generally well-received as well.
So I have done a little bit of, uh, due diligence. Uh, if there's additional that you would like me to do, I can do that. But I feel, I feel confident that they're a reputable business and company, and, um, from what I've heard from those other cities, they're, they're welcomed there.
Mayor?
Councilmember Sullivan.
Just to piggyback on that, I actually spoke with, uh, somebody from, a resident from Lake Crystal that actually has this policy, and very good through the process.
I do have one other question, just for the record here. I looked over at our city attorney, but I haven't, let's get an answer. Has the city attorney reviewed this? This is basically a contract. Has he reviewed it? What's his opinion?
I've reviewed it. Um, the decision entered, it obviously is a policy decision. I have discussed this particular program through NLC with various other city attorneys, um, regarding general concerns I had, and they've all indicated the cities that they've worked with that have it. It's very well-received.
Mr. Mayor, subject to someone not seconding it and going away for a while, I will make a motion that we enter into this marketing agreement with the exception of the last sentence of paragraph number two under grant of license, which reads, "City agrees that it will not extend a similar license to any competitor of company during the term and any renewal term of this agreement." In other words, that would be stricken. I so move.
And that's on page one of, under number two, grant of license?
That's correct.
And that's the last sentence you said?
Yes.
So we have a motion to go ahead and move forward, uh, except for city, the, the statement that says, "City agrees that it will not extend a similar license to any competitor of company during the term and any renewal term of this agreement." Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay?
I'm gonna abstain.
So we have a four-one-one. Motion carries. Now move on to, light, well, I guess before we go on, I think city staff's got direction in regards to what they need to do, if anything, as far as, we've already done our due diligence on reaching out to other cities. We got some feedback regarding, uh, Lake Crystal as well as St. Louis Park and Edina. Is there anything else that you would need from city council, uh, instructions as far as proceeding?
No, I'll work with, uh, NLC and seeing if this, um, amendment to the agreement is, is okay, and if it is, we will, we will execute the agreement on the behalf of city council and move forward.
Okay, thank you very much. So let's move on to light item seven, Charlie, which is the mayor and city council pay ordinance. First reading.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council. Uh, before you is an ordinance that has been developed, uh, according to one meeting that we had here at city council, and then another personnel and budget committee meeting. Uh, we looked at this, there was a recommendation, uh, from city council to send it to the personnel and budget. They looked at this, and we developed a, um, ordinance, which is included in your packet that would approve these, uh, these changes. Basically, city council has the authority to set their pay. Any change goes into effect after the next election. The, in the ordinance, the proposed date of effect is January first of 2019. Uh, what this ordinance reads is that the mayor's pay would go from three hundred dollars per month to three hundred and sixty. Uh, the council goes from two hundred and twenty to three hundred and ten. Uh, there is no, there will be no compensation for any additional meetings attended. And this falls within line, so I, I, I performed a survey using the League of Minnesota City's, uh, elected officials' compensation database. And basically, the query that I did was for populations, or cities with populations between one thousand and eight thousand, and came up with what the monthly, um, monthly average is for each one of those. So the, um, what we are proposing, uh, falls within range of that. The, as you can see, the city council falls a little bit below what the average is, and the mayor a little bit above the, the average. So with that, I'll entertain any questions. You have the opportunity to revise the ordinance if you feel fit. What we're looking for is, uh, getting feedback on the ordinance, conduct the first reading, so you can either read the ordinance or waive the, waive the first reading of the ordinance. And then what we would like to do is, um, per the discussion at the last council meeting, hold a public hearing at the next meeting, and conduct the second reading of the ordinance on October eighth. Uh, so with that, I'll, uh, entertain any questions.
Mayor?
Councilmember Sullivan.
So just to be clear, with these new salaries, monthly salaries, it eliminates the thirty-five dollar meeting stipend that went to, for several other meetings that councilmen attend, correct?
That is correct, yes. There will be no, uh, stipends for any additional meetings. Uh, the, it'll basically be a salary, and that's it.
Councilmember Favelas.
So this includes any, um, any sessions the city council has, including our, um, our retreat, which is a full day, could even be a two-day retreat, um, for city planning and so on. So in, in reality, uh, some folks will be receiving less money than what they've, what they've been getting, but the agreement with this is, is that everybody is getting the same thing for their time.
That is correct. And, and one thing I just wanna be clear is that, uh, administratively, tracking the minute, minute, or the meetings that people are attending is time-consuming, um, especially if we, the, the, the meetings that we were compensating for weren't defined, that was part of this exercise as well, is to, if we were going to provide a stipend, define what we would provide a stipend for. So administratively, this will free up some, you know, maybe an hour a month or something like that of time. So, um, there's a benefit there to freeing up some time for staff to work on other things as well.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, it also eliminates confusion where we don't know who's getting what. And, uh, when you had meetings, if people didn't attend, were they gonna get paid for those because they were on that commissioner board? This makes it quite clear, quite administratively correct. I think the other thing to understand is it also would include the fact that will be no, there'll be no extra compensation for special meetings, work sessions of the council. So it, it, it streamlines everything, makes it fair to all the members, and I think it's a, quite a benefit to the city, quite frankly.
And one of the things that we learned in this exercise is, going back to at least two thousand and four, there has not been any kind of compensation increase, uh, for these positions. So I'll entertain a motion to go ahead and, uh...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Roloff.
Um, I just have one quick, uh, one quick statement.
Sure.
Um, I had, I've had a few, um, homeowners actually reach out to me that don't actually support this, and, and so that will be my reasoning, actually, you already know.
Okay. Anybody else? I'll go ahead and entertain a motion to waive the first reading.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion's carried. Now move on to light item seven, Delta, Minnesota River Valley Public Utilities Commission, better known as MRF-PUC, joint powers agreement termination consent request.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, this is an item that we've talked about a few times this year. Um, essentially, this is the first step to alert Henderson, which I believe they, they already know, they, they understand that we've been talking about this. Per the joint powers agreement, that we intend to terminate the joint powers agreement with them, uh, that formed MRF-PUC. So, in summary, this declares that the city of La Sure intends to dissolve the JPA that formed MRF-PUC. Henderson, per the, per the JPA, must also consent to dissolving MRF-PUC, uh, via, um, I believe, seven point two in the, in the agreement, uh, section, or chapters, or section, article seven point two. And in the resolution, you'll see that those articles are, are described in there. Uh, but there are some loose ends that need to be figured out before that, before we can actually, uh, resolve, or that we need to resolve before we can dissolve. Basically, that, that, those are provisions for existing contracts. We currently have one contract that's open, uh, for a couple projects that are occurring. So provisions for that, uh, need to be determined, and, uh, one option for that, and this would be something that we would discuss in a joint meeting, um, which is part of, part of some of the direction that we would need, or that staff is seeking for a future meeting. Uh, but for those existing contracts, uh, I think the recommendation would be that we set up an escrow account, take money from the MRF-PUC account, put it in escrow to satisfy those contracts. That way, those provisions have been, um, resolved. Determining the asset division, it's, it's clear, there's been an amendment to the agreement about how the assets of MRF-PUC should be split. So that should be fairly easy, um, as far as looking back, as far as the revenue inputs from both entities. And then the last and final, it's not part of the JPA, but it's just kind of a, a good housekeeping measure, is to develop a wastewater use agreement with Henderson so that, uh, the wastewater treatment plant can, can continue to, uh, treat Henderson's wastewater. So we wanna continue to have that partnership. Again, we've, we've identified some areas that there are obvious redundancies between, uh, insurances, fiscal agent fees, um, audits, things of that nature. Uh, there's also a position that MRF-PUC approved this year for 2018 that we haven't filled. If we would fill, that would likely be a, um, hundred and five to a hundred and ten thousand dollar a year expenditure for that group. So looking at those, there are some obvious savings that we could see by doing this. I don't know if there's something, anything, uh, the, the chair of the MRF, of MRF-PUC is Johnny Favelas, council member here, so I don't know if there's any input on this, but just a matter of, um, you know, keeping... but just a matter of, you know, keeping the board active and engaged in what's going on there. I think some of these discussions have kind of, kind of given the board an idea that, you know, this is going to happen. And it's hard to keep a board motivated when they know that it might be terminated or dissolved in the future. So that's kind of the impetus of, of this coming to city council tonight, is just to start that process. There's a resolution that basically says that we, we are declaring our intent to dissolve. And then the direction that staff is looking for is to just set up a joint meeting with Henderson, have them come in and work through some of the, the provisions that we need to do before we can actually dissolve. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have about this item. And I don't know, I've, I've talked to the city attorney about the, the wording in this. We've talked to, you know, obviously, Mr. Favre is the chair of MRVPUC about this, with his city council hat on. So with that, I'll entertain any questions.
Before we ask any questions, could we get our board chair for MRVPUC to go ahead and maybe give your philosophies on dissolving of the MRVPUC JPA?
In theory, in the spirit of the JPA, is something more than what MRVPUC can actually achieve. We have tried a number of different things that would have given the, the PUC the powers that it needed to be able to function as a standalone. The issues with that are, is that when the, the JPA was initially set up, the very first thing that should have been in that would have been how we were going to have employees, where those employees were going to come from, and who was going to answer directly to the PUC. And because those things took essentially eight years to even start having those discussions, by that time, our counterparts no longer had any personnel at the, at the facility. La Sure was already basically donating its equipment, which the, the PUC, up until last year and budgeted for this year, hadn't been paying for. So the city had been, had been absorbing those costs. The, all the personnel actually answered to the city of La Sure. So trying to get what the board members or the commissioners would need would require additional staff that the PUC didn't necessarily have. So it doesn't make sense. It never, it really, the JPA doesn't make sense, period. It, it never should have been something between the two entities, in my opinion. And I've been at it now for 20-something months. It's a, it's a good team that's there. They want to do the right thing. We're nine years, almost 10 years, wi- without the resources to, to have done it. If this was done originally, I think that, a setup originally like this, I think it would have been a better go.
I very mu- I very much appreciate your insight as our board chair for MRVPUC. Now, any questions for our city administrator?
I just wanted to add one more thing. You know, we're looking at trying to save money here and, and run an operation for the public to have as little input as they can to get their wastewater treated. There's items here that, you know, I feel are excessive that we don't need, that we can provide from the city's standpoint. So ideally, once this gets rolled out, this, the, we, we hope that this will have some benefits to our, our fund, our sewer fund, and also to Henderson's, because we'll be able to treat their wastewater for, for cheaper as well, or less, less cost as well. So we're hoping that from the community standpoint of both the city of La Sure, Henderson, and AgriPure, who's a big partner here, that this will actually save on some of the treatment costs.
Councilmember Favre?
Part of what Jasper is talking about in saving of cost and better service, in the commission, we put together a budget for employees to be able to, to run the PUC, to run the facility entirely. And it became very clear that, that sure, we could hire the people that we need. However, there's, there's no, there's no chance for the vacation time, for the other time that's needed, and obviously, there's downtime. You'd have to hire additional people and be in a part-time or on-call status, where when you're working with the city of La Sure, with their employees, some of them are working for wastewater, wastewater and, and for the water side. They're pulled in and rotated, which, which saves a lot of money. And administrative-wise, it saves a fair amount. Not to mention that the, the city is already doing all of the, the financial end of things for the PUC. And the, the person that does all the secretarial work, again, is, is city. It's a lot easier to be able to share that personnel doing than to try to bring in somebody to handle that full-time. A lot of the savings that's gonna come with that is by being able to share the personnel throughout the city and not just dedicating everything to the PUC.
Anybody have any questions?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I think it's time to move on with this.
I do. Councilmember Grogman?
I see on the second page, well, on the third page, actually, a resolution, be it resolved by the city council of La Sure. I would move that, and I think we'll take up the other parts about directing staff separately. So just, just that resolution would be moved, with the understanding for everybody that hears this, that that's not the final. That's just saying we're gonna really work with Henderson. That's essentially what it says.
Okay, to be clear, strike, now therefore be it resolved by the city council?
No, it's now therefore be it resolved by the city of La Sure, and then it's whatever follows.
Okay.
It's just, I don't want to have to read the whole resolution. If you want me to, I will, or you can do it.
Go ahead, please.
Thank you. The city of La Sure, city coun, La Sure City Council hereby create, declares its desire to dissolve the JPA, that's joint powers agreement, right? Dated April 13, 2005, creating MRVPUC, amended on August 27, 2007, and amended on January 23, 2017, and seeks consent from the city of Henderson to terminate the JPA so the parties may work together to complete the termination of MRVPUC operations and to establish the future relationship between the cities of Henderson and La Sure regarding their wastewater needs and operations. That's what I'm moving.
Okay. So we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, there are two other things that are shown on the screen, directing the staff to do various things. I move both of them.
Okay, we have a motion to go ahead and have staff coordinate a joint meeting with Henderson to discuss the items needed to, to be planned for dissolution, and also to direct staff to engage Henderson in developing a wastewater use agreement with the city of La Sure. We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. And now move on to line item seven, echo, which is the public purpose expenditure policy.
Mayor Hague, members of the city council, before you is an item that we've developed, again, over a couple of meetings. There were, there are a couple of things that came of question in our dispersments and staff looked into it. And we thought the, the proper course of action would be to develop a public purpose expenditure policy. This is fairly common among cities to determine what is an appropriate expenditure and what is not. So what's been included in your packet is a draft of what staff has come up. This is by no means a final draft, as there will likely be items that, that come up that should be included at a future date. There's already been just discussion about a couple of items. Just to be clear, talking about some items that aren't included in this, such as mileage, those things are included in our personnel policy. So there's multiple places for these things to live. We could put something in there about our public, in our, in our public purpose expenditure policy about mileage and reimbursement for meals and things like that, and how much that is. But we do have a personnel policy that we also keep updated. So the purpose of this policy is to provide guidelines regarding which expenditures the city council has authorized as public purpose expenditure determined during and in accordance with the city's annual budget process. So that essentially says that city council approves all expenditures through the budget process. So if there's something in here in particular that there's, that we should budget for it, and it shouldn't be something that just comes up. Looking at this, and I'm not gonna go through these line item by line item unless you would like me to, but I can. But we have items in there listed for permitted expenditures for meals and refreshments. That's the number one thing that usually comes up as far as, is it okay? Is it not okay? Is it a public purpose? Is it not? Being that we're a charter city, we have a little discretion as far as determining these things. If we would only have, if we rely on state statute, we would have a little less discretion. So I just want to be clear, we don't have to amend our charter or recommend any sort of charter amendment for these things to be actual policy. We can adopt the policy. One thing staff is striving to do, when we do adopt policies, is have an adoption date. If we do amend it, we'll talk about, we can add an amended date, and then when it's enacted. So if we would want to say, this would want to be enacted on October 8th, which is what I included in the packet, just thinking about getting feedback at this meeting and potentially bringing it forward again, that would be something we could do. But we're trying to develop a series of policies using both League of Minnesota Cities input, and then just basic needs for the city, what comes up, what do we need policies for, and then kind of compiling all of these policies into one place so that we don't lose them. And, you know, the idea is that we have these available on our website for the public to see what our policies are for these items, so that everybody kind of knows what's an appropriate expenditure and what's not. So we, we have a plan for it. It's just we're, we're taking kind of baby steps to develop these. So are there any questions? I guess I'll just kind of turn this into an informal kind of questions about what the permitted expenditures for meals and refreshments might be. One thing we did include in here is the coffee and creamer for the police department, making it clear that that's to assist in maintaining a 20, 24-hour police coverage of the city. And then we also defined where we can have water coolers. And I put water coolers and heaters, because most, I think all of the water coolers we currently have have hot water dispensers in them as well. And basically, we can have those in buildings with public interactions. So buildings that the public comes in, and that would be offered to the public if they, if they come in for a meeting. Now, we likely, and, you know, this is a, this is another policy call. Typically, right now, I think we purchased bottles of water. This would be something where we would provide a glass for somebody to come in. A little feedback from council member Favre on just being a little bit more conscious about what we're, the amount of waste that we're producing. I think that's a good idea. We'll have, we'll have glasses available. So if somebody comes in for, let's say, Personnel and Budget Committee, you know, we can offer them water, and then we'll provide them a glass that we will then wash instead of having a glass that's thrown away or a bottle that's thrown away. So with that, I'll entertain questions. There's, there's a bunch of different slides here about the different parts of this. But if there's any questions about permitted expenditures for meals and refreshments, I'll entertain those right now.
I just wanted to make it clear before we get into the questions, that Personnel and Budget Committee has thoroughly gone through this document, and we've also had our city attorney also look this over.
Correct.
Questions?
I don't have any questions, but even though we, frankly, Mr. Mayor, if I may...
Please.
This was one of the latter items at our Personnel and Budget Committee meeting, and so we didn't really study it completely. I'm, I'm gonna just mention some minor corrections. We might as well get them on the table now.
Sure.
I don't know how to, okay, on the second page, under the section we're talking about, which is meals and refreshments, the line begins with the word refreshments. Everybody see that? Refreshments for employees during, it should read excessively, not accessably, hot days. We were gonna make that correction, it just didn't get made.
I'm not sure where you're at.
Yeah. Um, I can, so on this, up here on the screen, you can see refreshments for employees working during excessively, it should be excessively. So that word is incorrect. So that'll be changed. And I did make a note of that, it just didn't translate to this.
Now we're gonna get really deep into minor stuff.
Okay, councilmember Grogman, take us there.
I'm sorry for the police department that they can't have sweeteners, because they can only have coffee and creamer. Okay? I think we just have, I, and I can't think of a generic word, because I don't want to get into French roast and all different things. But probably should just read something like coffee, creamer, and sweeteners, and that includes non-sugar items, okay? Minor.
So noted.
I'm, I'm done. Let me think. In that section, you're done. You want to direct us, the next one will be permitted expenditures other. I've got two comments there, again, a wait.
Permitted expenditures, what might they be?
You wanna do it?
Please.
Mr. Mr. City Administrator, if you'd look at the second one, noting that the title is other permitted expenditures, and it reads staff time. Is the intent, you're going to compensate extra money for this, give them extra money, or we're just gonna use staff time?
Uh, the intent is to acknowledge that there is a cost for staff performing work for public events, and there's a cost to the city. So that's an expenditure that the city makes for a non, for a non-public item, such as maintaining a park. The, the example we give is we, we provide a lot of assistance during giant celebration. There is a cost to the city to do that. This year, we just started tracking that information. So there is a cost there. It depends on how you would like to word it.
I, I would suggest it be simply changed to use of staff and equipment. Then it doesn't look like we're, have a special expenditure over time. There might be, but it goes both ways.
I scratched the used for public events portion?
Yeah, no, just make it use of staff, strike out time, and have it, and equipment. So it reads use of staff and...
Equipment.
Equipment. And finally, the last thing about monuments is just awkwardly written. It reads city council deaths of active members. It should probably read something like deaths of active members of the city council. It just looks like we die when we're here, which sometimes may be the case. I don't know.
If I may, I'll, if there weren't any other questions, I know we kind of jumped to the other permitted expenditures, but if, if nobody has any other additional questions about the permitted expenses, I can jump into kind of what we've already talked about a little bit here. Other permitted expenditures, so we have uniforms, clothing, apparel, things like that, that are necessary to perform work in a safe and visible manner. The staff time, I, I think I explained that, what the intent of that is, is just to acknowledge that there will be events that come up that city staff will spend time on. We're trying to track that time so we can say, all right, well, we've, we've donated X amount of time to all these other entities in the city that have this. And that's a, that's a perfectly fine thing to do. And I think it, it really helps, helps with the organization of giant celebration and other things that we do here in the city, you know, Winter Fest and things like that. And then the monuments of appreciation, that was just in there, and I admit it was awkwardly written. So we can make those changes. Oh, yeah.
While we're speaking about monuments and that last one, do, since we're actually defining that, do we have to include, like, say, you'd, you'd have a city employee die on the job, or would you, would we be better off to define that in that same paragraph?
It wouldn't be, just tells a little.
It, it would be how you'd wanna define it. This admittedly is related to an event that happened here that we expended funds on, so I want to make sure.
But I'm just wondering, are we eliminating, by putting that in the way it's written, are we eliminating the ability to expend expenses in that avenue if something were to happen?
Possibly. We could define it differently if we would like.
Maybe we should go ahead and include city employees within that statement as well.
Okay.
Or just use city employees, period?
Yeah.
Yeah, because theoretically, city council is city employees. Yeah, because theoretically, city council is city employees.
Yeah, but you also have other committees and things like that.
They are not city employees.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else? You ready to move on to the next one?
Yeah. We've developed a list of prohibited expenditures, just to make things clear, they're, they're kind of common sense, but we want to make sure that they're in here. Food and refreshments for routine work meetings. So if you have a, like I have a standing leadership team meeting, you know, we can't expend dollars for donuts for that. That's just defining that. It's, it's really defined in the first section as far as what we can do for routine, or not routine work meetings, but any other meeting that we have. Alcoholic beverages are prohibited, employee functions or celebrations that are social. So if we have a birthday or a holiday, fundraisers for non-city related events, participation in optional in activities unless indicated, included as part of an overall conference registration. So the example I give for this is the MCMA conference, they usually have a little golf event beforehand, it's not included in the overall conference reser, or registration fee. If I would want to do that, I would have to pay for that on my own, that would not be an expenditure that I could expense. And then employee sponsored fundraiser events, which is pretty straightforward. Any questions about prohibited? And you know, there will be things that come to question over time and that's where we can modify this policy as we feel fit because there will be stuff that, that is missed, you know, admittedly. I used, when I developed this, this basically list is, I used Edina had a really good one and I thank council member Sullivan for sending that my way, Rich Field and then North Field as well. So they all had pretty up to date pub, public purpose expenditure policies and I kind of used it to, to refine it for La Sure. Membership in dues, so it's basically to promote, advertise, improve and develop the city of La Sure's resources and advantages, membership in, in dues and professional and La Sure, social and community organizations serve a public purpose when included in the budget adoption process. So what that means is that, let's say that a staff member, not myself, but a director wants to join Lyons and that's something that we budget and we have something in there, we can do that as long as we budget for it. So it's, it's pretty clear that, that we can use, you know, public dollars for memberships and dues. Any questions about that one? All right, and we'll, we'll jump into the employee service recognition program. And I want to be very clear, this isn't a bonus program or anything like that, but this is something that has been adopted. We have a retirement policy and that's where you maybe have seen some expenditures in the past for this, for some of the people that have recently retired. We also have a years of service policy that we've changed some of it around a little bit. But basically for the milestone, anniversaries, five, ten, fifteen, et cetera, there's a appreciation at a employee recognition gathering that we have individuals that meet that milestone. And this is basically to promote that if you have longevity here, we want you to stick around, there, there's some recognition for that. So for example, we have an employee recognition event coming up on October 10th and we have two people, both have five year anniversaries, so they would receive a fifty dollar gift card and that would just be a generic gift card. When people, when somebody would retire from the city of La Sure, the, the recognition program would kick in after fifteen years of service, so you'd have to have greater than or equal to fifteen years of service to receive a hundred and fifty dollar gift card and then up to thirty years, you'd get a three hundred dollar. We'd also define, you maybe have participated in, I believe, the last one we had was Greg Shaleen, when he retired, we had a coffee and cake event here, down here at city, in city hall in the council chambers. What we would do is we would define a maximum amount that we could spend on that and that would be a hundred dollars for those types of events. So defining what that is and how much we can spend on it. Any questions about the employee service recognition program item in the expenditure policy?
So can you get both an anniversary gift card and a comparable year, retirement one? So if you retire when you're, on your thirtieth anniversary, do you get both, both cards?
Potentially, yes, you could. I don't know how often that happens, but it, it could happen, yes. If you worked here for thirty years and you retired on your thirtieth anniversary or right around there, you would receive both.
And the same for if you retired at twenty-five or twenty or fifteen?
Correct.
Yeah, that one right there, I think we might have to, I, I think I have the same concern that council member Johnson has on that, that on the same year, we probably should only do one or the other. Is that what you're kind of thinking or?
Kind, I'm not, I'm not adamant about anything, just, it's kind of, in a way for certain things, it's redundant.
It, it is, um, it is, it definitely is. So if there's something in there that, you know, you can only receive one of these in a, any given annual year?
I think maybe if we change the language that if the individual chooses to retire on that given year, you know, they, they hit their thirty year milestone, they get the, they're, they're being recognized for their thirty years, I think that the redundancy would be giving them an additional three hundred dollar gift card for retiring.
Yeah, and ma, and maybe we get that long-term employee to work another year out of there to get that extra three hundred dollars.
Thirty-one years. At the thirty-one year mark, then they'd get that.
Yeah, is that, is that kind of, I'll take general direction on this, is that something that we kind of feel that should be included in the next iteration? I mean, we can include it and we can always pull it out at the next time too, so.
What do you guys think? I would be in support of that.
It seems redundant.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I think we have the majority.
Like Neil said, we didn't spend a lot of time on this in our personal budget, but I, I, this, this surprised me because in the, in the school district, you can't do this. You can't give monetary gifts on retirement or anniversaries. And so I'm, I think we should double check statute on that for cities too. It, it could be different, but I think just to be careful, we should check that.
Well, I believe, I think at the PBC meeting that we instruct staff to go ahead and check with the league of Minnesota cities to also get our city attorney's opinion.
We should do that.
Has that been done?
It, it has. So as long as we, we phrase it and it's in a, not considered a bonus or anything like that and we define it as not a bonus and it's, you know, longevity, it's for longevity, we want to support and promote people to work here for as long as we can, then it's, it's fine, as long as we define it in that manner. I think Todd, you can chime in specifically if we define it as, oh, this is a bonus or some other sort of compensation with that definition, then it's, no, we can't do it that way. But if it's to create an atmosphere where we support longevity and get people to, to stay with the city on an extended period of time, it's, it's an approved expenditure.
City Attorney Cory Els, do you have anything to say on this?
I don't have anything to add.
Thank you. Any other questions regards to the employee service recognition program? Let's move on.
I alluded to this before, there's an annual employee appreciation meal and program, you know, it's pretty informal usually. I think last year we held it at the fire hall and we had a little event, it was, I think it was earlier in the year than we're having it this year, but we kind of go through what's happened in the city, what's going on. And then we, we look at who has these milestone anniversaries and then provide them with that, that gift and formally acknowledge them in front of all the group. So we get some people that, you know, aren't normally working together, we get them all into one place and, you know, say, you know, now I'll use Dan Greep for example because he's no longer here, but he had one last year, I think it was his thirty year anniversary, get him out in front of everybody and everybody probably knew Dan, but they get a little bit of face time with him and it just kind of creates more of an atmosphere where everybody knows each other. So we're having that again this year on the 10th. So that's just saying that we, we can have this employee appreciation meal program. There's an expenditure for that as long as we budget for it, which we have, we've, we've always budgeted for that. You know, if that's something that we don't want to budget for, it kind of stops that program from happening and gives the council the flexibility to control it using the, the budget mechanisms.
Anybody have any issues? Council member Sullivan?
Just a quick question on that, it references specifically full-time employees. Why would we eliminate our seasonal employees if we're doing it annually? Because we do obviously appreciate them as well and they're putting in a lot of hours too.
Definitely. So we, we looked at this, we put full-time because it's, sometimes our seasonal employees leave, they're not present for the event. What we could do is we could have something in there for like a seasonal employee appreciation thing. Where I came from in North Field, we had that, where at the end of the, end of the summer, when your seasonals are, are there, you'd have a seasonal employee picnic. We could add that, definitely. But this was just because of that logistics thing, I think really tied to this year, that most of our seasonals have already left, so defining it. So we could, we could do two things, you know, include this with part-time employees as well and then do something separate for seasonals or we could try to coordinate it so that everybody's all at one too. Do it at the end of August or something like that.
There's a pretty good chance that our seasonal employees are going to come back year after year, correct?
We hope so.
We certainly want to go ahead and extend the appreciation into them, to the, to the, our seasonal employees, let them know that they're a part of the team as well. I think that's what you're trying to say, council member Sullivan.
All right. We'll move on to our employee wellness and safety programs and essentially, so we have two committees here internally, we have a employee wellness committee and we have an employee safety committee. The employee wellness committee is fairly new in our, let me think, in our previous healthcare provider, we had a program for wellness that we could tap into dollars for. We've since moved to PEAP, Public Employees Insurance Program. They have a similar program, it's set up a little bit differently, but we want to make sure that we access as, as many of those wellness dollars as we can. We have a committee, we allocate funds for that in our budget, so there's multiple places where we can fund this, which we do fund this. But typically we have an employee wellness, like picnic once a year in the summer, we'll do that and we'll kind of have like healthy snacks and we'll do some activities and things like that, just to promote wellness within the, the city. The safety committee, we do a really good job in my opinion of tracking things and meeting monthly on, on safety things, which is very important. Through MMUA, Minnesota Municipal Utilities Association, has a program that we have had a contract with for many, many years. So many years, we can't find the actual contract anymore and we're trying to find it so that we can.
That's the local forty-niners?
Um, that's everybody. So everybody in the city has this, has a contract that we, that we do things with MMUA. But we have a safety committee, you know, they're not having, so at their, at their, at their serial meetings, we don't provide any food or anything like that, but they might have a safety event or a training event that we have at the fire hall where you learn about fire extinguishers or something like that. We usually do it over lunch so that people actually show up and then we provide food at that time. So that's just saying that those are both proper expenditures. Any questions about the wellness or safety programs? All right. And then this item was added, board and commission appreciation items. This item was added so that we can expend some dollars looking at providing a certificate or plaque or something for our board and commission members that meet certain milestones. It leaves it very open as far as what the city council wants to do. Typically what happens and what we've done is city council or somebody will request, the mayor or city council will request something to be given to somebody. This covers that expenditure if there are any costs. Typically what we do is, you know, give a certificate that we make in-house. If there's more of a milestone for somebody, let's say that maybe was on the planning commission for ten years, that would be something that we could look at on a request basis. So it kind of adds a, adds an item in there. So any questions about the board and commission? Okay. Well, that's, that's it for the policy. I have some pretty good notes here as far as what feedback I've gotten, but what we would like to do, it looks like we're not ready to consider adoption and I've gotten direction on what to bring forward. The plan would be to bring forward an additional draft of this on October 8th. If there's anything that comes up in the meantime that you would like discussed at that time, just send me an email and let me know and I can add that to there as a discussion item. So with that, I don't believe there's any action that's necessary.
For the time being, we'll just table seven echo until the October 8th meeting. Council member Sullivan?
I do have one other question that actually just got posed to me while we were sitting here. Back to the annual employee appreciation.
Okay.
You're also eliminating your fire department, which I believe we classify as employees as well, by saying full-time employees.
Yep, I think you're right.
And they're strictly volunteer.
Yep, we could add something in there about that.
Firefighters. Would they have their own budget for this or?
I, I can check, the question the mayor poses, maybe they already have something like this and I believe they do. I think it's February they have their annual or their appreciation thing, so.
Yeah, you're on that, you're on that commission now, if I'm not mistaken, so.
Yep, so I can look at that and if we want to put something in there, I can put something in there so that the fire department can also have these annual employee appreciation meal and programs.
So we've got a couple of things to check out, so we're going to go ahead and bring this back up on our October 8th meeting. Thank you very much for such a thorough explanation. And it's great that council member Sullivan brought this to our attention in regards to making sure that we had a public purpose expenditure policy in place. So thank you very much for doing all the research that you did with the league of Minnesota cities.
Thank you guys on the Personnel and Budget Committee for working through it.
Let's move on to seven F, board and commissions stipend discussion.
So Mayor Hague, as you can imagine, we had a busy Personnel and Budget Committee meeting. This was kind of sent back to the Personnel and Budget Committee to look at this as far as providing a stipend for our board and commission members. So a couple of things that we looked at, can we legally provide income or a stipend to board and commission members? What do we currently do? And then what would the costs be associated with providing compensation? So what I've done and with the help of the city attorney, in city code, it limits our ability to provide compensation for the fire commission and the planning commission directly in there. It says, it says that we cannot, that members of that group cannot be compensated. Now, if that is something city council feels strongly about, that can be amended, we can go through that, amend city code via ordinance. But what I have done in this table here that you can see is develop a list of our board and commissions that we have. And basically the member list, member number would be the non-city council members that are on that board or commission. One thing I did is I put nine on the charter commission because that is a kind of a separate entity, but that, that is just, it could be eight because right now, I think there's just one city council member on there technically. But basically assuming how many meetings per year that they would meet and then that stipend amount and how much that annual cost would be. So looking at these numbers, it's right around eighty-five hundred dollars a year to provide stipends for that. Now, there's a couple of things in there, the HRA does not, per, per state statute does not also allow items to be compensated, so that should be under the notes as well. And then the planning commission and fire commission cannot be compensated. So we looked at this at the Personnel and Budget Committee. One of the questions that was posed during the meeting was, is there a benefit for providing a stipend? And the idea was, well, you know, twenty-five dollars a meeting is something, but is it something that will change the dynamic of the people that we hope to get on the board and commissions? And generally the thought was, and correct me if I'm wrong, if I'm speaking for anybody out of turn from Personnel and Budget as I'm summarizing this, is that there really isn't a benefit to that. And we currently don't provide stipends. I believe the only vacancy that we have currently in our boards and commissions is on the charter commission. And there's two people I know that are interested in it and there isn't any compensation for it. So that was the direction that Personnel and Budget Committee, they made a recommendation to continue the practice of not providing a stipend, but you know, really, you know, making the point clear that, that they're appreciated, they're volunteers, they're very essential to the city functions. But it, you know, our city code makes it hard for us to provide compensation for two of them in state statute for one other one. So the recommendation is to do nothing at this time from the Personnel and Budget Committee. If that changes, we can, we can always change that. If we want to go the route of updating our city code, we can do that as well. That process would be via ordinance. So with that, I'll entertain any questions about this. Maybe Personnel and Budget, if I missed anything, could, could fill in some of the areas.
I believe you summed up everything quite well. Any questions?
I have a question about how we go from here. Essentially, we're, we're, the Personnel and Budget Committee, of which I'm a member, recommended the status quo. But if we want to reaffirm that, it might be appropriate to have a motion to say that we continue the practice of not providing the stipend, et cetera. That would update this in terms of our policy. Everybody follow what I said? I've seen nodded heads. So if I may, Mr. Mayor, I would simply move that we continue the practice of not providing the stipend for board and commission members.
So moved, we have a second.
Second.
Is there any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
Um, one, one thing I could add, and maybe I'll put it in the public purpose expenditure policy, and there's a co- question about compensation here, because in there's code, it says we can't compensate individuals on the planning commission or fire commission, but a lot of cities, what they have is a board and commission appreciation dinner program like that. I could put that in there, and maybe I could talk to our city attorney to see if that would be classified as compensation, if we would have some sort of appreciation dinner, 'cause I think it's important to show our boards and commissions that we appreciate them, um, but that's just a thought I had, and I know we talked about it at Personnel and Budget a little bit, um, and that, that concern about, you know, compensating and what the definition of that is, so, um, I think what I'll do is I'll include that in there, and if we wanna pull it out of the policy, um, on the eighth, we can do that, but I think it's important that we really acknowledge that we appreciate the boards and commissions and what they do and the time they put in, so.
Right. Thank you so much. Let's move on to seven golf, which is the River Park Boat Access Update.
All right. Mayor Hag, members of the city council, um, I don't have any slides of this, but in your packet, you'll see some things that are going on. You maybe noticed that our boat access has been closed for about a month now, and what happened is, uh, after the floodwaters of our last flood, and it seems like it's been flooding all summer long, uh, but when the, the waters actually receded to the point which were, where they were about, um, two weeks ago, we noticed that there was some damage at our, uh, at our boat access, and we closed it down, we started communicating with the DNR, and then, um, worked with a local excavator to go in there and, and take out some of the debris. Well, through that, uh, excavator and that local contractor, looking at the debris and pulling some of it out, the damage was more extensive than what we thought. Um, so, what we're looking at, the possibility, and roughly, the expense for the city would be fifteen thousand dollars, um, to basically rehab our, um, our boat access so that people could use it this fall. More importantly, this would be, we would be rehabbing it so that it would be accessible in the spring when people are out there, uh, potentially trying to, to fish, uh, after the ice and snow are, are, are melted. Um, there's a, we have an agreement with the Minnesota DNR, basically, they put in the, the access, we have to maintain it moving forward. What they've done, and through the communications we've had with them, they're willing to participate somewhat in these costs, one, by providing new concrete planks for the, uh, access, and two, providing some riprap. What riprap is, is just big, big rocks that they put down in the river to kinda stabilize the bank. Now, there's no guarantee that that's gonna fix this forever, because, as you know, the river floods fairly frequently, and it's always kind of changing its channel, um, depending on what's going on, so, this isn't something that will go away, this is something that we'll likely have conversations about, um, ongoing into the future. We hope that we can stabilize it to the point where we don't have to have a conversation for, you know, five years, ten years, uh, but the likelihood of it not flooding is, is pretty low, I believe. Um, so what we're basically, what I wanna do is, uh, provide an update, we've been posting things on social media and the website about the access, but we're basically to a point where, once the waters do recede here this fall, which I think they will do, um, probably in the next month, uh, we'd like to perform the work. Now, this is something that hasn't been budgeted for, uh, this is something that we, we would like to do, it's fifteen thousand dollars, it's my opinion that we have, uh, budget capacity to do this, to not exceed what we've budgeted just from savings on other items, um, and we just, I just wanna have a conversation about it and get direction, um, so that on a future, uh, disbursement, you might see, um, an expenditure for rehabbing this. Now, this might not be fifteen thousand dollars, but that's the, that's what I would recommend the do not exceed number to be, if there is any sort of approval. Now, if city council wants to say, we'll just close down the access until next year, and we can budget for it next year, we can do that as well. So, I'll take direction from the group, if you have questions, hopefully the, I mean, the, the pictures basically sell, tell that it's a mess down there, and everything's kinda broken, and the, you know, floodwaters are very strong and destructive, so.
Question. As you said earlier, we have an awful lot of floods, it seems. When's the last time the city of La Sura's incurred any expense to this boat, uh, ramp?
Uh, you know, I don't know off the top of my head, I did check with, uh, with our FEMA records, we have a FEMA file, we did file, um, a claim on this, I believe in 2012, which was denied because we had already received money to repair it. So, the, basically, the way it works is they'll repair it once, and then it's kinda on you to do it, so, it's, it's in the floodplain, it floods, it's, it's an area of concern that we know about, it's, you know, at times, it's a very long, uh, fairly steep access, you know, it, it's something that you can look at moving it, but then you're incurring a lot more costs. Um, it's established where it's at, it works, but if that's the direction that we receive, we could look at, um, if that's the direction that you're going, maybe it's not in the best place, but, um, that would be a, a much more significant expenditure to, to move something like that.
Well, we certainly can't get any money from FEMA in the future, no matter what we do, and we don't qualify for any other type of flood insurance, correct?
Uh, correct, uh, our, our public boat accesses that are, any property that we have that's in the floodplain, we don't have flood insurance for those items, it's basically, you have them in there, and it's at, you're, you're liable for any damage that occurs.
So just to make sure I understand this in my head, we could literally spend fifteen thousand dollars a day to go ahead and fix this boat access, and get flooded next month, and be out another fifteen thousand, and do the work all over again, because there's no way of getting reimbursed. Do we have any idea how many people are using this boat access annually?
Oh, we don't have those numbers either, um, I know that there's more than two cat fishing events that occur, and when those occur, there's, the access is full, um, there's been times, just personally, that I've seen up to a dozen to two dozen vehicles out there, so it gets used, um, but I don't have annual numbers or anything like that, I just have personal experience.
I have a question on the fifteen thousand dollar estimate, is that the local excavator gave us that number?
The local excavator with input from the Minnesota DNR.
Okay, so it's a fairly reliable estimate.
I would say so, and if we put a do not exceed number on there, what I'm hoping is that if it does exceed, the DNR will pick up the rest. Uh, that's kinda the intention of having it not exceed that, um, the DNR has riprap and, and, uh, materials scattered throughout the state that they have access to, uh, we would likely, whatever they can't provide, we would purchase from a, um, from a quarry or a vendor. So, I, I'm, I'm confident from the staff that I've, I've talked to, that fifteen thousand dollars would cover the repairs, that would get it to the point where the, people could use it safely again, uh, but Mayor Hag has a great point, that we don't know what the future brings, uh, it could be damaged next year again, uh, that's a risk that we run almost every year, multiple times a year.
And maybe, my next part to this would be, the requirements that, uh, DNR has regarding rivers and river access, could we have a group of citizens that are into the fishing, go ahead and do these repairs, or is that something that's gotta be sanctioned by DNR and City of La Sura?
Uh, well, they're not, they wouldn't have to be sanctioned by the DNR, but you, you have to be aware, this takes some major equipment, some very large excavators to do this work. I don't think local people would be able to do it, um, I know we have local people that have excavators, but, um, it's, it's kind of a fine art to be able to do it and know what the river's doing. If there would be a local, local person contractor that had the experience to do it, sure, they could just do it. Um, the, the business or the, the, uh, contractor that the DNR uses is from Henderson, so it's fa- fairly local, um, but, yeah, it's, there isn't any requirement that we use the DNR, we just use them because they put in boat accesses all over the state, they have the experience.
Okay.
Comment, uh, from a comp plan perspective, um, and from a envisioned 2020 perspective, uh, utilization of the river in our community was emphasized in both of those studies, and even though we, we haven't capitalized in a major way on that, uh, it doesn't seem responsible for us to, um-
Not do that.
-neglect this amenity that we already have, and keep it going as we're in the process of evaluating how we can even better use it in the future. So I, I guess I don't see a reason not to do it, uh, and-
Okay. Any other questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Faviles.
Jasper, did the, did-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did the-
Getting tired.
Sorry. Did the, uh, the excavators, did anybody talk about cutting that bank back into where the parking lot is a little bit, by say, twenty feet? And then doing riprap all the way around on the side, so that it's, creates an alcove where you can drive in? That would make it so that it's, it's more protected from the current as it's going through, which is bypassing?
We've actually had that conversation with the DNR and internally with staff, um, basically, you'd be creating a, a small harbor, um, that would be protected, a couple, couple items to be aware of, that's expensive, it'd be quite expensive to do that, we don't know exactly what it would be, but fifteen thousand dollars would be kinda peanuts to do compared to that. The other thing is that when it would flood, um, you'd have silting of that, and we'd have to clean it out, um, there'd be some maintenance that we would have to work on, and there's no guarantee that some of that riprap and other items wouldn't be washed away with the floodwaters as well, um, because that, that whole area becomes flooded, and there's current there, and there's, you know, things, things that are occurring under the water that you can't see, so, we did look at it, I think it would be a solution to look at if we would ever redevelop or, um, do something planning-wise for River Park, long-term solution. Um, to me, the fifteen thousand dollars is the probably cheapest option that will probably buy us the most time, um, to figure out if we wanna do it. The big question is, do we wanna have, is the boat access important, and do, do we wanna invest in it to keep it open? Um, as Dave alluded, there's, there's some planning documents out there that say, yeah, we, we need to really embrace the river, and, you know, it's, it's really used by people, and I think it brings people in town, into town occasionally, so, you know, there's, there's other options that we can engineer that might be longer term, but they're also a lot more expensive.
Can we, can we do some research to find out when the last time the city's been responsible for spending any money towards this?
I, I, well, so-
Personally, I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that we didn't do this a year ago, and now we're, here we are again.
So in, in 2011, it wasn't related to any damage, but, um, the, uh, the planks, the concrete planks were replaced out there, so you'll see, if you're out there, you'll see, uh, concrete planks stacked up, and you actually declared those surplus probably two months ago now, um, but that was the last time any work's been done on the, on the ramp, and that wasn't due to any damage, it was basically done because they wanted to upgrade the, the ramp, and that was all DNR-funded, so, from my understanding, there wasn't any city, um, city costs with that, so, it'd be before 2011, I could do a little research and figure it out if, if, uh, if that's what you'd like.
Does anybody else feel that way, or am I the only one?
I like the law.
Okay, so that's two, that's three.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a majority on that, so yes, maybe we can go ahead and table this and, uh, come back with it once we know the last time we authorized any expenditures for River Park and the boat ramp.
All right, I can do that, I just wanna make it, uh, make the council aware that if we do table it to October eighth, it, the work likely won't happen until next year, and then we can budget for it, um, but, likely, with the flooding schedule, the boat ramp will be closed until June or July of next year, so, that's a consideration to, to take into account.
Yeah, even if we get this information, how is that gonna impact our decision?
Like I said, if we spent fifteen thousand last year, I'd like to know that this isn't just throwing another fifteen thousand away every year, because we, we can't control the river, and we certainly can't control the flood. So at what point do we go ahead and say that the type of boat ramp that we're using just isn't working, and we have to come up with a better solution?
Well, Ben's been on the council for six years, I've been on for four years, and this is the first time that I have, uh, been a part of a, just an upgrade or a maintenance expenditure there.
Okay. So six years and four years.
I know that we haven't done anything since 2011, as far as city dollars go, um, the DNR has invested money, but, uh, I would be confident to say it's been at least seven years, since we've expended any, any funds on the boat access. Now, we put gravel and stuff down on the, the parking lot and that surface, so we, we put maintenance dollars into it, but as far as the boat access goes, um, I'm fairly confident at least seven years.
And I, and I'm not criticizing your interest in that, I'm just looking at the timeline, uh, the timeline for getting this done is a critical piece here, it sounds like.
Is it critical?
If, if we have to wait until October eighth, unless there's a long, kinda warm fall, we likely won't be able to do the work.
Until next year.
Until next year, and depending on the flood, the flooding in the spring, um, you know, this year, we went in basically until the end of June before we could've done any work, so, I would say if there, if, if we would wait, there's a potential that the access will be closed until July, or later, um, it all depends on the flooding and when, when you can get in there and do the work.
Mayor?
Councilmember Sullivan.
So Jasper, you said the DNR initially installed that access point, we were responsible for the upkeep, correct?
Correct.
So do we budget annually for maintenance costs to that boat landing?
We don't, because there typically isn't any, um, maintenance.
But in the long run, potentially, this could've prevented this conversation, had we been budgeting and setting money aside?
I, I don't think there's, there was anything we could be doing to maintain the boat access any differently than we were, but-
But what I'm getting at is potentially, we would have money set aside at this point for this fifteen thousand dollars, and now we're looking to authorize tonight.
Potentially, if you would accumulate those funds over the years, um, kinda like what we're doing with our capital plan right now. We could have something in there for our capital plan where we're accumulating it, but not spending it, kinda thing. We haven't done that in the past, um, at, as a city.
I guess I, I mean, I strongly feel, Mayor Hag, that we need to move forward with this, I think there's a lot of people from our community that use that access, and I see what people use in Mankato at the access points for kayaking, I know there's a lot of people that I work with that kayak to our community, and use that access to get in and out of the river.
Well, it's certainly been brought to my attention, that there's obviously interest moving forward, so we don't miss the opportunity, and now that I know that it's been since 2011, that there's been any money spent on this, that's basically telling me that we're spending a little over twenty-one hundred dollars a year, for each year that has gone by, since we've had to put any monies towards this. Councilmember Faviles.
I think one of the things that we're overlooking is, I can remember a number of times, uh, where they've had the, uh, the rescue, and fire have had to have access into there for looking for people.
That's true.
And without that, that's gonna make that rather difficult, and I don't like the idea of not having it available until July.
I'd like to go ahead and rescind my request to go ahead and get additional information for the tabling of the sign October eighth, and entertain a motion to go ahead and, uh, take action tonight, uh, is there, is somebody-
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any additional discussion?
Let's be clear, what's the action, please?
The action is to go ahead and authorize fifteen thousand dollars for repair of the boat access at River Park, we'll partner with the Minnesota Department of Natural Resources.
Thank you.
And then we go ahead and take that money that we currently have saved throughout our 2018 budget capacity, and use that money, instead of having to worry about doing this in 2019, and look for a funding source at that point. So we have a motion, we have a second, any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There you go, done.
Yes.
Seven hotel. Mayor Hag, so, city council adopted procedures for public comment.
Uh, Mayor Hag, members of the city council, it, this is just a refresher, recap, um, since we have people in attendance and commenting now, just about what our public comment procedures are that have been adopted. Uh, these were adopted back in 2017, uh, it's the mayor's duty to enforce these items, and basically, what we did is we developed a sheet, um, and what you see, um, is what was out there today, uh, that sheet, there's specific information that was defined by city council as far as what we wanted to include on there. There was a process, I believe there's at least two meetings that we met, and we talked about this. Um, again, the guidelines are developed, uh, from city, uh, by city council, uh, one thing that came up, one question that had is negative remarks about city staff or employees is not allowed, uh, you know, do we extend that? Obviously, it's, to me, uh, it's obvious that it's extended to city council members, uh, board and commission members, things like that, but really, it's the, the duty of the city, of the mayor to enforce it and, and make sure that, you know, if there is something happening that people are, are made aware that it's not appropriate, um, so there is some discretion. Um, the, the sign-in sheet that we have, it's very specific as far as what items, uh, we request. we request, and there's a reason for it. So, basically, the name, the address, are you a resident? Is it on the agenda? And what the subject is. So, the address, so we keep all of these sheets, and we keep them in a file for all of the City Council things. So, like, um, I have a little pile here of all the information that we've received tonight, and we put it in a file so that if we ever have to go back, we can pull out this information. And we got an NLC packet and a, a League of Minnesota Cities Open Meeting Law Packet. So, all those things will be in a file in case somebody has a question in the future. So, this, this item, this comment sheet is also included in there. We put that in there on, at every meeting, regardless if somebody signs up or they don't. Um, so, with that, I'll entertain any questions about, about the process. You know, we can, we can amend these policies at any given time. The, uh, gentleman from the League of Minnesota Cities, um, iterated or reiterated that it's important to have a process and a policy and to follow it so that it's consistent. Um, you know, we don't have a timer or anything here, so if that's something that we want to do, we can do that, um, you know, just to make it fair for everybody, because that comment has come up as well. So, it's, it's something that we can do. We can amend, um, as we feel fit. So, with that, I'll entertain questions, comments about the process and the policy.
Councilmember Favelas.
Yeah, I, I don't think that it's, that the idea is that anybody's going to be sitting here watching a clock on it. And if that were the case, then that's in the wrong place. You know, uh, it really comes down to, um, uh, being respectful to the people that are coming up and, and talking, and they are actually watching a clock as well. They can be respectful of our to, of our time. Sorry.
I agree, I agree with that. But, on the flip side, we sat and listened to the League of Minnesota Cities attorneys speak to us tonight saying, to be fair across the board. So, if we have it in writing that it's five minutes, I, I think we should be sticking to that five minutes.
Okay. Councilmember Johnson.
I'm going to weigh in on that. I've got something else I'd like to comment on.
Go ahead and comment on whatever you'd like.
Um, I think, I think we need a purpose for having this public comment, so everybody understands what the purpose of that public comment is. And that's not clearly stated. We've got guidelines on how to do it, but what's the purpose? Why are we doing this? And I'm not saying that I don't, uh, understand that there is a purpose, but I think we need to clarify it, because that also then alludes to, so what, what is the City Council's responsibility once somebody comments? That ties into the purpose of it. If part of the purpose is that the City Council gains some knowledge or information, uh, or a responsibility to answer a question or respond, uh, that, that's not clarified. We just have these guidelines, and, and I think it would be helpful for citizens to understand why, why we have this. What's the purpose? We should clarify that. And also, I can understand some, from some comments, that maybe we don't have a responsibility to respond, and we have that option. But, in a lot of cases, citizens are coming forward with, with a concern, and we leave them hanging. And as a council member, I felt at times we leave it hanging, and I don't know what staff did or what happened, or if anybody got back to the citizen. And that's the part I'm uncomfortable with. That was a part I was uncomfortable with a month ago, uh, when Mr. Morrell came up and asked the question. Um, I think, I think that we need to clarify the purpose and the why, and, and how we're going to operate and what, what the city's responsibility. I understand that we don't have to tell them, but to me, that doesn't make sense.
And I just want to reiterate that, you know, if anybody from the public has questions, they can always come to staff. I mean, that's usually the, the best place to come and ask the question. Um, you know, because a lot of things happen that, you know, you guys, City Council doesn't know the details on. So, if there's questions, definitely come to staff. Uh, I would recommend coming to staff first. You have every right to come to public comment, but, um, if you have a, a question, definitely reach out to staff, and we'll, we'll try to get that answered for you.
So, why do we need a public comment, then, if we got that? You, you understand what I'm getting at? I'm not trying to cause problems. I just want a clearer purpose for why we're doing that, and so the citizens understand what the purpose is too. And, and I think it's important to have a public forum and let people express how they're feeling about something. And we ought to say that, but then... I have voice, Mike.
Well, in, in essence, what you're saying, Councilmember Johnson, is simply this. That this is an opportunity for citizens to express themselves to the council. So, a summary of that would be to provide information to the council, period. I don't see it as a time to interrogate us. That's not what it is. It's a time to provide information. Citizens can talk to us individually, they can talk to staff individually. That's not an issue. But this is not a time for us to be put on the spot and to be answering questions. That's not its purpose. I have no problem being put on the spot. It's just, that's not the way to do it.
What I'd like to say is, if we can review back when we talked about the UTV policy, that was something that was brought up at a public comment. And ultimately, the decision was made to go ahead and allow UTVs, uh, to be registered and driven in the city of La Sure. But if we recall, that decision did not happen that night. A group of individuals went out, did their research. They researched other cities that had UTVs. They brought that information to us. They gave us handouts associated with it. It gave us an opportunity to go ahead and take those documents and review those documents for an upcoming City Council meeting, which is exactly what we did. And ultimately, now we have a law on our books allowing UTVs. But to go ahead and make a decision based off what's being said to us the night of public comment, there's times that we're going to require to seek, uh, a legal opinion, perhaps, or to talk to staff in regards to what the possibilities would be moving forward. And I don't know how we'd be able to do that by answering a concern at that time. We can certainly answer that concern at a later time, and that's what we've attempted to do.
We should state that, though, then. We should state that we're taking this under advisement. The mayor and the city administrator will confer with the legal counsel and, and, and research this and...
So, you want that stated each time we have a public comment?
I think the public should understand that we've heard you, and we're going to take it under consideration and deal with it appropriately. And that may mean not responding.
Councilmember Favelas.
Part of this other, also comes down to, we have, it's, it's nine-thirty. We're not, we're not done with everything that we have for business that's already allocated for this evening. Um, some of us have been sitting here since about four-fifteen, um, which is fine. It's what we do. When we have public comment, um, and I don't know what those subjects are going to be, and I can't be adequately prepared to have a discussion with anybody over that until I know what it is that they have a comment about. Um, the idea being is, is that it's brought to us, and then it comes down to, is this something that I need to, uh, discuss with city staff? Is this something that city staff is already going, going to be on? Is this something that's going to come up in the future that City Council is going to have to vote on, like the, the, uh, for, uh, the side-by-sides? That's a prime example, as the, the mayor gave, as to, uh, people coming up, having a discussion, uh, telling us, not even a discussion, telling us what it is that they would like and why. Gave us some information, and, um, we discussed it, went back through city staff, and, and ultimately, we were able to come up with something that was policy. This job, it takes a lot to have everything prepared for us to try to make a decision. And it's obvious that we're all sitting here bouncing the stuff back and forth, trying to make it work. Um, not everybody's going to have the same opinion, um, but when it comes to public comment, I'm not interested in engaging with somebody in public comment when I don't know all the facts. And I need to know what those facts are by going to city staff and saying, can you find this out for us?
Anybody else?
I, I have one comment that it's implicit in the fact that we make these rules. However, we could, if we wanted to, also state in here, knowing that, I'll start again, knowing that at times there are going to be some hot-button topics, some things in the community that we, we need to hear about, and the, the citizens want us to hear. We could say something like this, and I'm, I've, I can give it to you later if somebody wants it, but, "exceptions at particular meetings that treat all speakers in an equitable manner or that extend the total time for public comment can be made by a majority vote of the City Council." Fits right in with the League of Minnesota Cities told us tonight.
Right, exactly.
Now, that's implicit within the fact we're making the rules to start with, so we can do anything we want with them at any time, but it states it right up front, so that if we know that that's coming, we are ready for that. But, I don't know how you want to handle this, Mayor, but there's some things to let soak here. I think we're okay where we are, but we can do some improvement. Let me give you a simple example. Item number two, the verb is wrong. It should not be is, it should be are. Remarks are, not is, allowed. I mean, it's that simple. We, there are little things we can tweak in here to make it better.
Yeah. City Attorney Coria.
I just want to be clear that the policy that the council adopted in February 2017 is a little bit more extensive than Jasper's summary. And one of the items in there is specifically, an exception can be made by majority vote of the council in certain situations.
That's correct.
So, it's already in the actual policy, and Jasper just provided you a short summary of it, so you had the talking points for tonight.
Right. Well, I've heard a lot of different things, everything...
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Roloff.
I think there are, um, I kind of feel, um, actually personally, that there are some certain times when, um, someone from the public, um, stands up and speaks to us and has questions for us. Um, and if one of us knows some, um, knows actually some of the information on it, I feel that we should, um, maybe, uh, be able to, um, speak to it. And, um, and, uh, for example, would be that actually, did, did, um, would be that actually the, um, development that was being proposed. Um, I got contacted numerous, numerously by people, um, about it, and when Ron came up to speak and to figure out where the process was at the last time he came to speak, and we just left him hanging, um, and, um, and we knew that it was nowhere going to go nowhere. I think we should have, um, that we should in, um, certain times be able to respond to some of those, um, questions at, um, at our meetings.
And I certainly understand exactly what you're saying, and there's a part of me that obviously agrees with what you're saying, but at that particular time, we had not been given, uh, the word, uh, by city staff or by our city attorney. And that's why no reply was given at that time. And until we can double-check our facts, I'm not going to go ahead and put my neck out there and state anything. So, anybody else have anything? Okay. So, our mission on this was to review and discuss the public comment guidelines. I believe we've done that. I think we've got some areas that we can tweak. I think that, uh, one of the things that I heard was, uh, perhaps have staff go ahead and see what we can do as far as maybe adding some language there, uh, that we could use in the future, such as consideration and a response later. Uh, and maybe we can reiterate that each time we open public comment. Uh, we could adhere to the five-minute rule. I think that it still goes without question that we have to adequately prepare for response. I don't think we can go ahead and do anything about that. I think that we have to go ahead and take it under advisement, and perhaps go ahead and get back as soon as we know what the official response is. So, I think those types of things we can certainly implement into our public comment. And do staff have any questions in regards to what they need to do to proceed on this?
No. I think, uh, if anything, I can come up with some ideas. We can revisit this during the retreat if we would like, uh, similar to what we did last time. Uh, you know, but I think I can come up with some ideas, and Todd is correct, there was in the staff report a more formal, um, policy, and there might be some things that we could add in the guidelines as well to kind of define some of these things. So...
Mayor, in addition to the specifics you mentioned, I'd just like to add back the clarification of the purpose, communication of the purpose of this.
Mayor, one last question as well. When we get to answering questions about, if there are questions raised at a public comments section, do we just add a line item, or we automatically go over that at our next meeting?
That's something, something we're going to have to certainly take under advisement, but I think, to me, just thinking outside the box right now, it makes sense to go ahead and add that as a line item.
Right.
City Council can always direct the questions to have the individual reach out to city staff, too. That's one of the simplest ways to, um, get the answers if there's a, if there's a question.
But on the other side of that, I, I fall back, sometimes questions are getting asked here, and we livestream it as well. There's people that watch them. It would be nice to follow back up and make sure that we are answering those publicly as well.
We could certainly make sure that we can do that moving forward with the agenda, don't you think? That if we have something that we could go ahead and release to the, to the public, we can make that an agenda item?
Definitely, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Very good discussion. Let's move on to seven India, which is the MediaCom franchise fee and the public educational and government access, or known as PEG rates.
Mayor and City Council, uh, we have been talking a lot about MediaCom and the franchise fee lately, and I think, uh, again, we went to the Personnel and Budget Committee to kind of formulate a, a recommendation to City Council as far as how we would like to proceed. Uh, basically, there were some options that were outlined as far as level of service goes with, uh, with, with providing cable access to, to residents. Through discussion, and it was a rigorous discussion at Personnel and Budget, um, the recommendation from that group was to reduce the franchise fee to two-point-five percent, keep the PEG charge at eighty-five cents per customer per month, uh, maintain the level of service that we currently have, that's, that would be consistent with this. And then we would work on a best practice to take the livestream data, the data that we have pushed up to livestream, and push that to the MediaCom PEG channel that we have, we, we have access to. Um, so, and then the PEG charge, which, again, we can only use for capital equipment, uh, those types of costs would be used to update the equipment, uh, such as the cameras, microphones, things like that, as needed. Um, so, uh, with that, I think that's the recommendation from Personnel and Budget. If there's additional questions, um, again, if we would like to modify the current franchise agreement, we just need to give MediaCom ninety days' notice, uh, for any changes.
Councilmember Sullivan.
Just following back up on my question from the last meeting when we discussed this, have we had any conversations with the school district in regards to what they're going to do, what they want to do with this channel as well?
Yes. Thank you for reminding me that. I did have a meeting with the, the superintendent, and she said she would like to have school items on the PEG channel. Right now, uh, they just don't have funding to do so. Um, so, we're brainstorming some ways to partner. And likely, what'll come from this is we'll have a meeting either, I have to look back at my notes, but there will be a joint meeting between the school board and the City Council in the near future. It might be in January or February of next year, um, but looking at ways that we can partner. Uh, there might be a way that we can partner and have them, uh, utilize our livestream account, so then they can livestream things. Um, the big thing for me is to figure out how do we push this data up to MediaCom efficiently, where we don't need large servers, DVDs, or DVD players, things like that. I, I think there's a way, um, I know there's a way. Um, but yeah, they, they've expressed some interest. They just have some funding limitations right now.
Any other questions or concerns?
Yes, I just have one.
Councilmember Roloff.
Mr. Mayor, uh, maybe, uh, maybe it was stated, um, um, but, um, but I wasn't able to actually catch it, but what is the main reason to re, to, 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 to two-point-five?
So, the main reason, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody from the Personnel and Budget Committee, but, uh, basically, to maintain the level of service that we have right now, uh, we can do that with a two-point-five percent franchise fee. Uh, originally, we had a five, uh, using this model or this option, which was option three in the last, uh, council packet. It was stating that two-point-five would be used to maintain the level of service that we have right now, and then another, the other two-point-five percent would go towards, uh, street repair and maintenance. So, that's been removed. Um, that's essentially the part that's being pulled out of that. Um, you know, it, in general, uh, MediaCom customers should receive a two-point-five percent reduction of just their cable bill. Now, there's no guarantees that MediaCom won't adjust that upward or do anything like that, but the city's portion, the franchise fee will be, would be reduced if this would be, um, passed.
Mayor?
Councilmember Sullivan?
Jasper, you keep referencing maintaining the service we're currently providing, but we're currently not providing any thing to MediaCom customers.
Well, outside of the PEG portion, correct?
Right.
Well, yeah, right now, nothing, yeah.
Correct. So I believe, staff believes that we can find a low, no-cost option for pushing this information up to the PEG channel. Now, we still have to do a little bit of legwork there, but, you know, if we, if we're looking at not doing any programming and we're just going to put the raw data up there from our council meetings, or maybe like the last two council meetings, and just have it on rotate, where you have a meeting and then you have the next meeting, and then it's just repeating all throughout the day. Something low cost like that, I think we can do for, for, for minimal impact. So it would be, it would be an increase in service technically, but it would be, you know, very minimal. But yeah, there would be access for some.
Just don't tell me that it'd be twice as effective because two times zero is still zero, but we'd have something finally, is what you're saying. And we do have some city costs in administering the contract, et cetera. That was the reasoning. I'm prepared to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, if other people don't want to say anything yet, we could do it in discussion, but I'm certainly willing to wait.
Anybody have any other questions, concerns, thoughts, ideas?
I have one, just one comment with that.
Councilmember Fabolies.
My one comment with that is, is with going up to a level of service from no level of service, we might actually have some comment on that that could help drive what happens in the future. But at least this gives us a ground floor to start with.
That's a good point. If I may, you always have the option to adjust this as well, per the contract term, so it just requires a ninety days, ninety-day notice. So if, let's say we want to really get into programming and doing some different things with our PEG channel, we, we could increase the funding through that.
Excuse me, on the other hand, if we want to completely eliminate the franchise fee and the PEG fee because of not being used, or because there are so few customers that it's not going to support what we need to do, we can do that.
That's correct.
In business, we'll call this a soft launch.
Right. And you know, not that this had a lot to do with the decision process moving forward, but I think, Councilmember Roloff, it's important to understand that we were paying before just the five percent franchise fee without that eighty-five cents for the PEG fee. That PEG fee is a new thing, so, you know, our customers are certainly going to see something that they hadn't seen before. So not that, not that that really matters, but just to make sure that we all understand that. Councilmember Crowe, but I believe you said you had a motion that you had framed.
I am prepared to make the following motion, that we set the MediaCom franchise fee at two point five percent and give appropriate notice to MediaCom to effect this change.
I'll second.
Any questions or concerns? We have a motion and a second for a two point five percent franchise fee and appropriate notice to MediaCom. Regarding one, one question I have would be, we are going to keep the eighty-five cents PEG charge, correct?
That was not mentioned, yeah, that's still in effect.
So we're going to treat those as two separate motions.
That would, yeah, that's, that's not even, that's not on the floor.
Okay, good. Just wanted to make sure. So we have a motion and a second for a two point five percent franchise fee. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Make sure I get this right. Franchise fee portion is approved at a six oh. Okay. Now, does anybody want to do anything in regards to the PEG charge at this point? Okay, sounds good.
So in effect, the PEG stays where it's at?
Yep, keeps it at eighty-five cents. Okay, so now that completes everything that we have on our agenda. I thank you to everybody for sticking around as you have. Now it's time for our comments, reports, and items of appreciation. Councilmember Crowe, now how about we start with you tonight, sir?
I'll pass, thank you.
Okay. Just give me one second so I can take some notes. Councilmember Roloff?
I don't have anything at this time.
Councilmember Johnson?
I'd just like to commend Jasper and Samantha for the organization of the town hall meeting on the downtown master plan last Wednesday. We had a good turnout, good dialogue, good discussion, and we need that, we need that type of community engagement to make improvements and change in our community, so thanks for a good job there, Jasper.
Councilmember Fabolies?
The next big city meeting about our city is when?
March nineteenth?
March nineteenth.
I believe, twenty nineteen.
Future of the city forum?
Future of the city forum, is that what you're referring to?
Okay, that's, my thoughts on that would be for all of us to talk with everyone that we know that is in the forty and below age group, to come and show support for their city and their thoughts and their ideas and the things that we are looking for, for our future. We continue to have representatives from a specific age group, and there were very few in that under, under forty, down in their twenties. And, and, and we know they're there, we, we, they moved here for a reason, they have kids in our school system, I know they have opinions. I'd love to see that those opinions come to us from something other than, other than social media, but to actually be there for us too. We'd like to be able to engage with them as well.
Fantastic idea, thank you. Councilmember Sullivan?
I'd just piggyback on that and say it was a very good meeting put on by Sam and Jasper, very organized. Had transit meeting two weeks ago, right after our last meeting?
Okay.
Set of rates for next year, there is going to be some adjustments with rates for users.
Upper down.
Up a little bit, I think. I can't remember off the top of my head.
So slight increase.
Yeah, am I correct in saying that, Jasper?
They vary from St. Peter and La Sure, but I think there is a slight increase in La Sure, it's just a touch.
Other than that, I don't have anything to note.
Did they do anything with their budget regarding capital equipment purchases moving forward for twenty nineteen?
You know, I forgot my packet.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Sorry.
Maybe you can go ahead and get with me on that.
Yep.
Uh, city attorney Corial?
Nothing I can think of, sir.
Okay, and our city administrator?
No, just, you know, eighty people, I believe, showed up for the downtown, the downtown meeting, so that, that was a very good turnout. I thought it was good discussion that we had, and we got, you know, I think, I think the future, we have options, so we hope that people are engaged just internally. You know, from that discussion that we had there, we developed a internal like communications group that we're going to look at the different demographics and how we're communicating with them, and seeing if there's a way that we can communicate better, and just in general with, with the various people, because there's, you know, different needs within the community. So you might see some different things out there, if there's something that you have any input on, don't like, do like, let us know, but we're going to try some different things and, you know, hopefully be able to engage more people. It's always a challenge.
Okay, thank you. As mayor, excuse me, I'm having a hard time speaking because I'm very dry. As mayor of La Sure, I feel it's my responsibility to make the following statement. Everything that's transpired with this whole I and H thing back from the ninth of August, Planning Commission meeting, and everything that's transpired since that date, I'm ultimately responsible. I'm the mayor of this city. So if anybody has any issues about how anything's taken place on that, I'm the one to blame. Secondly, I hope you see that by doing like the open meeting law presentation tonight, and by working with our various boards, commissions, and committees, we're taking every step necessary to make sure that everybody is properly trained and educated regards to what their roles and responsibilities are. Everybody that's on any board, commission, or committee will be signing an oath of, oath of office, they will be signing a code of conduct, and we will continue to do training to make sure that we do the best possible job that we can. Next point I want to make out is the fact that we have to do a better job with our communication, and again, I hold myself accountable for that. We will do a better job moving forward, making sure that everybody within the city is properly informed in regards to what's going on at all times, when the opportunity allows itself. That's the key operative statement right there. We are not always in a position where we can just go ahead and say things without knowing all the facts. So I hope the city of La Sure accepts my apology, and I will do a better job moving forward. And with that, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.